All set to go, Mr. Buckley?
We are good to go. Is Mr. Connolly on?
He will be joining us.
Okay, just wanted to make sure they can hear us over there. Okay.
I've been in person.
I call this meeting to order at 6:30, 6:00 PM. We begin with public input. If anybody has any thoughts or comments they want to make to us. Mr. Simons?
Actually, let me give you the microphone here. Hi, Jeff Simons from 31 Hickory Lane here in town. Wanted to, first off, wish everybody a happy anniversary, 10th anniversary of this wonderful facility. Opening day about a week or so ago, something like that, right? It was great. It's hard to imagine. And something else that kind of tripped my memory is there was a little note in the transcript this week, you know, the old looking back section. And 30 years when pretty much the project of beginning to rehabilitate and rebuild all the schools began. Starting with the little school, the new school a few times, and then the hood, and finally, the renovation of the batch. And that was about a 20-year project. Lot of work, a lot of volunteers, a lot of effort went into that with great results. In the middle of all that, a couple of operating overrides and things like Save Our Schools and fundraising for books and things that shouldn't have had to have been, you know, from money raised privately. But what got me thinking was, you know, I just wanted to really thank all the people that tried to get the override passed this past spring. It was a great effort, great turnout at town meeting, unfortunate result at the election. But I think the lesson there is, and I was very disturbed by a lot of the comments I heard at town meeting. A lot of the stuff we've been hearing for decades, you know, that the school budget's out of control, they don't know what they're spending money on. And I don't know if Mike's listening somewhere, but I don't think he gets enough credit for being so on top of our finances here. He is a miracle man. And I think a lot, most people in town don't know that. That, you know, why should we be paying for schools? You know, our kids are done. We're seniors, where, you know, this is not for us to have to pay. And that's just horrible. And that's not, that's private education. You know, the people who, only the kids, families who have kids in school pay for the education. That's private school. This is public education. And seniors that, you know, can't support this. This is terrible for seniors. I'm a senior. I support this, have been. And all my friends now are seniors. And all through, all the building projects, there were seniors that completely supported the building of the schools and some of the overrides. And so, but unfortunately, these things continue to persist. And I think what really has to happen is what happened 30 years ago when we started the school projects is, you know, you reach out, you start with a few people, and it builds, and it builds, and it builds. And the reason that I think that all those projects ultimately were successful is that the little school started small, that same crew recruited more people when it came time to the batch community. More people came in there, the hood community, and so forth. But you build up this stable of people that are knowledgeable, that advocate, that can spread the word, that can dispel things like we heard at town meeting. You can't allow the people that are the dissenters to just get all the words in. You know, you need a really good crew of people to monitor school committee meetings, you know, get out there publicly and talk about how, you know, the budget is in control, and they're on it, and the realities of the school budget being so, you know, 80% salary, there's very little discretion there. And it takes work to get people to understand all that stuff. And education is what's the key. And I hope that the people that sort of had their first taste of this, you know, it was really 10 years since the school was built, and so things really quieted down quite a bit in terms of advocacy. And it's, I can see seeds of it beginning to come up again. And I hope that that persists because I think what needs to happen, you know, the turnout at town meeting was great, but town meetings are always the easy ones to pass. It's the override elections that are the hard ones to pass. And that means convincing a lot of people around town. You know, we went to chamber of commerce meetings and business meetings and anybody who would have us go learn about the schools and so forth. And, you know, again, start small, but, and you need a good core of people. And not only did that core of people go on to become the people that ran the school building committees, like people like me who did the ballot question committees and helped get the votes passed. And then people like Deanna Castro who started, you know, the more lobbying on Beacon Hill and trying to get funding, you know, passed for more support for the school system, that kind of thing. We need that, we need that to get built up again. And I'm hoping that the people that got active at town meeting and came out to vote and tried to organize the vote will continue to do this all through the year. To advocate, you know, to the selectmen to try it again and start earlier this time. Unfortunately, I think the people had a big hand tied behind their back, you know, giving us, what, was four weeks, five weeks or something to pull this all together. That's just near impossible. It's something that has to go on all year long. So I'm hopeful that we had a good core of people that really tried to get that vote out in the spring, that they'll continue and then recruit more and more people because that's what it takes. It takes a lot of people. You don't have to do a big job. You can do a little job in your neighborhood and with your friends, or we need people for big jobs. You know, a lot of the people that worked on the, some of the early projects ended up going, becoming school committee members, selectmen, school building committee people, finance committee folks. You need school supporters in all those different aspects of town government and all these different committees and so forth. So, lesson learned, we hope. But I'm just appealing again as we did 30 years ago. And I just, in fact, I just had dinner with Marcy Bailey the other night. And she was the first person that responded to my plea in the transcript for more people to help with the little school project. And look what that did for us. That was pretty good. So Marcy put in a lot of many hours and was probably one of the most effective selectmen we've ever had and one of the best school advocates we've ever had because she stepped forward. And it takes a lot of time, no doubt. But all of us had all kinds of things going on. My kids were little at the time. Everybody who worked on all these committees and so forth. Everyone's got jobs and school kids and homework and everything, but, you know, you need to step up to do whatever you can. So hopefully, that will continue. Like to get the word out to anybody who's listening or people who are listening, spread it around. You can't just show up for town meeting and expect this to happen. That's not enough, as we found out. That was great. That was, you know, the turnout was amazing, but it's an ongoing process that hopefully we can really kind of build this up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Agree completely with you. So, any other thoughts from the public?
I just have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you during the spring you were able to educate me on what you did 10 years ago, and thank you for that. And I know my next door neighbor, the Hastings, were directly involved in that too. So I've heard from them and I know how much work it was. And I think especially between Tim and I with the campaign season this past spring, we did develop a great core group of people. There was, you know, I think, a lot of participation, as you said, in town meeting. And it just goes to show that we do have to work harder and we do have to be at every single meeting we can go to. And, you know, maybe even if there's canvassing or door knocking or additional social media. But we are thinking about it and we do know that we need more time. But I always appreciate your support too because a lot of times it is people with kids in the school system. And like you were saying, there are a lot of seniors who hopefully do support this. And because that's really what we need.
I mean, and Mr. Simons, I think you are a model citizen in town. You are one of the ones that you and Marcy influenced me in a lot of things early on. I think I met you at Andrew, which is, sadly, is not around anymore, Running United for Education. And so, yeah, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with all of your thoughts. I'll say that we voted on our school committee goals last meeting. And some of the goals were not even just for advocacy, just for education, getting out to the community what is being done in these schools and what, you know, what it means. And so there's a lot of discussion in the last couple of meetings about how to do that. And not even just vote, 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 but also just, here's what's happening in the schools. And so, yeah, we are-
I think Jennifer and I will have a lot of fun with that school committee goal.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it fully recognize that, you know. And again, I mean, on a personal level, like I, you know, as the chair of the school committee, I felt sort of responsible for a lot of what happened. And, you know, it's my job and our job to educate the community. And we take it seriously and we'll continue to do that, so.
Just one other comment I forgot to mention is the continuing to be very clear and consistent to communicate the impacts that the failure of the override had. And I think that's really, really important for people to understand. You know, again, you know, some of these votes took multiple times to get done because people just didn't believe, you know, thought we were crying wolf. And these have real impacts. And I think it's really important for us to communicate to everybody that it was real and what exactly the impact was. And it's only going to get worse as we try to explain to people. And, you know, it's not scare tactics, it's real. And I think that maybe it'll really start to hit home with some folks.
But at the same time, without cutting arts programs for a year or cutting half day, doing half day Wednesdays or any of that stuff either, so.
Okay, appreciate the comments. Move on to the student reports. Sushi, do you want to grab your microphone again? We have Sushi Shurkam here, as of 2025.
Yeah, so obviously, we had our first day of school. School's fully started. But prior to school, we had the SLAM orientation for freshmen, which was really successful, and we do it yearly. And the PSATs are coming up on October 26th. And the registration for that opened last week. For fine arts, the Masters cast list came out for Mean Girls, which is the musical they're doing this year. And rehearsals started last week for that. For athletic matters, Chrissy Murado is the new athletic trainer. And the first football game, the first home football game was last Friday, and it was a win for North Reading. And pretty much most of the, all of the fall sports have now started. So girls' boys soccer, golf, field hockey, cross country, volleyball, all their seasons have started. In terms of kind of other news, Homecoming is being hosted by Student Council. It's on November 15th, and it is at an external venue from the school, which is different from how usually it is. It's in Peabody. And the process for freshman officer elections is starting. And it's kind of similar to what we did for the sophomore and junior class last year with the four-person executive board. The Meet the Candidates, that is organized by the school newspaper club, is on, is tomorrow on the 24th. And the elections and speeches are on the 25th. And something that I'm a part of that is also kind of newly talked about in the school is student involvement in the school reaccreditation committees. So Mr. Lepret can probably talk about that too. But there's basically different subcommittees working on approving different principles. And I personally am on the student learning committee. So I work with a number of teachers as well as a couple of other students. And basically, my work is used as evidence for how North Reading is achieving certain goals and is also, you know, ways, showing ways in which the school can improve. For my student work project, we haven't had too many since it's still pretty early on. But there was a group project that we did in our AP Spanish class about global challenges and global crises. And ours was the health crisis. So me and my fellow groupmates, we kind of broke it up into different topics. So mine personally was mental health. So it's kind of this, it's in Spanish, so, you know, not much to understand. But, yeah, basically, it just kind of talked about, we had to design a solution for how we plan to combat some different global challenges. And ours particularly in health. So fellow group member of mine did malaria and other kind of communicative diseases. And then my other group member did obesity. So, yeah, we just kind of explained different statistics and different solutions, but in Spanish, so.
Wow, very impressive.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments, questions? I have three quick ones. Number one, since a lot of us have young children here, can you talk about what SLAM is?
Yeah, so basically, it's student leadership and mentoring. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors can all be a part of it. There's an application process. So when I was a freshman, I had my own SLAM mentor that would come in during power blocks every other week. And then when I was kind of entering my sophomore year, I decided to apply and I got in. So I've been a mentor for the past three years. And basically, the whole goal is to try and guide the freshmen who are, you know, maybe a little lost in trying to find, you know, their place in the school. Trying to guide them through either different, like, class challenges, homework help, sports, things like that. And, you know, we always like encourage club and sport involvement and try to just get them really involved in the school.
Excellent, thank you. And then Homecoming, is that for ninth through 12?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's for all four grades, yeah.
And then just the last one. So obviously, you're a student rep again this year for the school committee. You, what do we have for this year? How many student reps do we have this year, do you know?
I think we have a lot more than we usually do.
Oh, yeah?
I don't know the precise number, but-
I can share that I met with seven others today. There was one person not there, and Sushi wasn't there. So nine in total, I believe. Mr. Lepret, Ms. Alonso did a great job helping to recruit some. I know that Sushi did a lot of personal recruitment, telling people what this is all about. We have several representatives from each of the grade levels of 10, 11, 12. So we're really going to build some momentum moving forward. So the only bad news is that you might not see Sushi as often as we did last year because there's more people that have to work through. But I'm really excited about that. So thank you for all you did to help recruit and to bring in some peers. It's great.
Yeah, and anyhow, I'll go off topic here a little bit and just say if you guys are discussing issues that you want with the school committee, if you ever want to have, you know, one or two of us come and talk as well, you know, just to, you know, be able to discuss issues, feel free to invite us to that. We're happy to come in.
We'd love to.
Mr. Simons is talking about, you know, trying to bring together the community for the override, but also it's good for us to know what, you know, is impacting students and to hear their. I know the last couple of years, one of my highlights of the year was when students have had projects and they wanted to hear from the school committee on, you know, their civic action projects, be able to come into the school and speak to the students. Like the athletic trainer was one of the big ones last year people were talking about. And so, yeah, so you are the voice of the students. And so if you want to, outside of the meetings, you know, have somebody come there sometimes, don't hesitate to reach out.
Yeah, and I definitely think one thing that, kind of going off of what was talked about, I definitely think the override is being talked about a lot more, at least amongst the senior class. I don't know, you know, how much the younger classes might know about it or, you know, care to learn about it. But I attended the town meeting last year where we voted, or where you guys voted. And I also did an interview with Dr. Daly for the newspaper at the school, and I published an article about it. I tried to get it out as quick as possible to help spread the word, but, you know, ultimately, might not have been as successful. But I definitely think that it's something that's being talked about. So even though we can't vote yet, it's still, you know, spreading, so.
And getting, I mean, the seniors are a big voting block too. You know, getting, making sure everybody registers to vote. And even reaching out to people that graduated in the last couple of years because they probably are registered in North Reading still. And so even if they're at school, they can, you know, they're a big voting box, so have their voices heard. Appreciate the update. Thank you very much. And we'll see you in nine, nine meetings or something.
Okay, before we get to the new business, I see some honored guests here tonight. So I'm going to let Dr. Daly lead us in that part of the agenda.
Thank you so much. So something we've done for a few years now, you know, we've increased our staffing reports to the district. We talk about all of our new hires. And I think it's important to clarify here and later in the staffing report too that we did make a lot of cuts. We did not replace a lot of positions. And sometimes this year, when we had a retirement resignation, we did not fill that position. When we had a halftime position that left to find a full-time job, we didn't even replace that person. But we still do have turnover. We still do have teachers that retire, resign, that we do need to replace. So when I say new hires, I'm not often, it's not beyond the budget of last year, it's replacing people and keeping our staff of several hundred people moving. So I just want to clarify that as well. But when we do bring in our new staff, we share that here. And with our teachers, you know, the first three years is a rigorous program where our teachers get to know our district. We have a rigorous, comprehensive induction program where they're with a trained mentor for year one. And then we have years two and three where they're spending a lot of time doing additional time through our program to really learn what it is to work, not only as a teacher, but to work in North Reading. So professional status is something that is granted after three consecutive full years in the district. They may have worked somewhere else for a period of time, but this is three years in the district with us here in North Reading. So something that we've done is invite our educators back to the meeting to recognize them, to thank them for their service. And this is really a relationship where they're making a commitment to us and we're making a commitment to them by offering them the professional teacher status. So we have six people here tonight, two that are not here tonight. And I just wanted to take a moment, recognize them. We have a small, little token of appreciation for you. So I'll just call everyone down. You can come over here, I'll give you the token and we can, I don't know if you want to take a photo or something. We can figure out, I know Neil's not here tonight. But Jennifer Coffin from Bachelor's School. Carmella Peak from the Bachelor's School. Holly Ronan from the Hood School. Alexandra Alessa from the Hood School, but also some at the Little. Kathy Kerwin from the North Reading Middle School. Wendy Byrne from North Reading Middle School. And not here tonight, I believe, Kevin McLeod. And Kiara Moore not here tonight. Thank you to them as well for their good service. Do you want to do a photo with them, or I should just-
Yeah, we can do a photo. Definitely want to take a photo?
This is just a small little-
We can all get in the photo, come on.
We can't do many.
No.
How about you? You're so photogenic.
Everyone got a way to it, really.
We can all get in the photo, so.
Thank you.
Speaking of pictures, we need to do a school committee picture, right?
Already get in here. So, yeah, I'll just say that, Ms. Connolly's here. So thank you to everybody and congratulations on the professional status. I'll just say that even though you've only been here for three years, I know some of the names already because I think, you know, a lot of the new teachers really do get involved, you know, right away, which is great. And just want to encourage you to do that. Like I think the students really appreciate having, you know, new teachers here. And I think that, I think what we've learned a lot over the last couple of years is that educators are so important outside of the classroom too. And so, you know, over the last few years, having the newer teachers come in, the professional status come in, what I've seen is, I see so many of those teachers that are leading, you know, trips to other countries and leading, you know, sports teams and everything else. And it's just, it's just so nice to have a balance of very experienced teachers and newer teachers there. And so you guys are a really important part of the ecosystem here. And so just really thank you guys for making the commitment to North Reading and staying here and wish you all the best this year and in the future. So thank you, guys. Are there thoughts, comments?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all. You're welcome to stay as long as you want, or you can leave. Okay, so we're going to move on. Let Mr. Connolly move up here and... So the school improvement plans tonight. I hear that Mr. Lepret either pulled the short stick or the long stick. I don't know which is the, if he wanted to go first or second, but... Mr. Lepret, are you going to come up and you're going to present to us here?
I am, I'm going to be joined by the Assistant Principal.
Oh, Mrs. Alonso as well. Two for the price of one tonight. You know, I'm going to go into the stands just because-
I can get it here, but I just like to move. I like to have all variety.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, we're Simon Caston. So like, every time you open something, just click that, share this tab.
I will do that.
Again, school council before?
Well, the next one, when you open something else, like if I were to open this-
We did the school council.
Share this tab. So every, whatever you're showing, you just got to remember to come in.
Because people at home are like- Yeah, okay. Thank you. Nice to see everybody. Thank you for allowing the high school an opportunity to talk about its school improvement plan. As you know, our school improvement plan is on the website. It is a living, breathing document. We have just a quick overview, the executives over here, a lot, a ton of live links and things. So my hope tonight is to hit a couple of highlights, but all of the departments have specific goals. They have links to their data pages and things like that. So there's a ton of information on here. To go, just to give a brief overview of the goals. Goal number one is our continued focus on multi-tiered systems of support and strategies with respect to individual student learning. Goal two has shifted a bit with respect to our, the ongoing, you know, started and now two-year process for our reaccreditation. And the work that is that work, but also what we're going to learn about ourselves from that work and how we take and assess that information. Goal three, again, that idea of looking at best practices with blended learning and technology. Goal four is our goal focused on student voice and inclusivity and kind of matches up with the DEIB, Big Rock. And then goal five is our attention to power block and its effectiveness and, you know, kind of individual pilot programs. We might run with that to see if it's, you know, providing us what we want. So to highlight an important point as I start, you know, the formal program here. We're not going to say that these are, you know, in a certain priority area, that any one of them is more important than another. But I would challenge you to watch this and then think, maybe one of them is. Oh, sorry.
The pursuit of wellness is-
We love Special Olympics!
The unified sports program is such a fantastic addition to any school.
Special Olympics is all about spreading awareness and creating these unified programs.
It's raised the level of awareness here that disability doesn't make you unable to do something.
It gives a kid an opportunity to try something new and make new friends.
No, I mean, special needs kids can make soccer their basketball team. They need the special needs basketball team so they can play.
Like it's just really brought, you know, the whole school together.
The whole experience is transformational. You can see students making decisions. You know, is every student included? Are we doing something where every student feels, you know, connected?
I think it just brings everybody together, teachers, students, and kids that necessarily wouldn't have ever done anything with the special needs kids at the school.
Like it's helped me so much, like seeing like the true kindness
Everybody is excited to try something that's a little bit different that they would normally ever try. And, you know, maybe some people didn't really know what Special Olympics was before this, but now it's getting a lot of exposure.
Everyone will be there and everyone gets to see it and everyone gets to like take part in it.
I think the more people that do it, the more of awareness and more money we can raise.
We want to raise as much money as we can and kind of bring, this is a perfect opportunity to bring the community together, both raising money and through the action of jumping.
I think that, you know, just having a unified sports program and bringing the polar plunge to your school is a great way to kind of get the ball rolling.
We're the first school in Massachusetts to do it, so I think if we have a good turnout and I think it'll hopefully help other schools to be like, look how awesome this was.
A big part of this is like, we want these opportunities to be available for other schools that don't exactly have a strong unified program right now, because we've seen how much of an impact it can have on us and we want that for other schools, too.
We love Bajon Lebaks!
You know, I would like to be confident in the fact that other people that see what we're doing recognize that it's the right thing to do, that it's, it's an empowering thing to do, and it has been, you know, an unbelievable addition to what happens here at the school. I couldn't be more proud of the efforts and the successes of the unified program. All right. Standing position. So that was a promotional video that the Special Olympics asked to film as we started our polar plunge journey, and they have been sharing that with other schools as a real motivator to get other schools invested. We were the, officially the first school in Massachusetts to do the mobile polar plunge. And yeah, I mean, it certainly speaks for itself. Amazing.
Congratulations, that was awesome.
It really was.
Yeah, it's, uh, thank you. It was, it's great, it's great, it's a joy. Any questions about that?
We did plan to send that video out, we just wanted to show that.
And it's on the website.
So the polar plunge, was it you, you brought the mobile polar plunge and the people jumped in and raised money for the special?
Correct, yeah, yeah. And as the, you know, we, we, it was the most fundraising that a high school had done that year in, in any activity. I think we were, our target was what kind of, we thought maybe 5,000 and I think we made almost 15,000.
Oh, wow. And was that going to Special Olympics or in general?
Special Olympics.
Or unified program here, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The most interesting thing, if I could just add on, is that those two girls that you saw that were partners, they have arranged their schedule, so now they're interns in, in the classroom with those students, and they go out last period and practice independent life skills with the students. So now, for example, when they go to, when the class goes to Market Basket to practice shopping and getting, and getting their list of things together, they're not walking with an adult anymore, they're walking with a kid, they're walking with a peer. And for the students who are practicing that skill, it just brings them so much more independence, they feel like they're on their own. I mean, the adults are around, but they're not next to them anymore, and I just, that, that connection is unbreakable for the kids.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great program, I mean, I recognize some people in that, in that video, but great program and, you know, appreciate both of you guys supporting it. I know Ms. Alonso is, is the ref for a lot of the unified games as well, so.
Yeah, next, next Wednesday.
She is, she is, she's got some great refereeing skills.
Well, I think that's an excellent point, because we have some more local schools that have a unified basketball team now that haven't in the past. So it's definitely catching on.
Yes.
When's the next plunge?
The next plunge? That's a great question. That is a great question. I, I'm not sure.
We can't wait to see the costume.
I hope we can dial up another 50-degree day, which we have.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, you, you got so lucky on the day.
So it was a temporary plunge?
It was, yeah, yeah. Although, I'll tell you, the water was legit. If you, if you happened to be there, the water was legit. Okay, so we want to continue, I think, focusing on kind of goal three and I D E I B work.
Sure. Okay, so, um, let me just, um, share this tab. Okay. So last year's goal, oh, I'm sorry, this year's goal is by, well, let me review. Last year we had a goal that we were going to increase the capacity, the capacity of all of the teachers in including equity and inclusion in their instructional strategies to reach all students. And we did walkthroughs, which you'll see in a, in our review. But for this year, we would like, our goal is that 100% of teachers will identify and implement two instructional strategies aligned with our focus indicators, which we developed during these walkthroughs. Teachers will analyze the effectiveness of these strategies and at least two identified demographic, demographic subgroups. The analysis will include student achievement data and reflections on instructional impact with findings reported by the June 20, June of 24. So getting out of this, which I might need some help.
Just go back to the, the moon.
Up top?
Right here. The middle, the middle.
Okay. This is, it's not coming up.
I think you could click on that one.
I thought I did.
You're in the same.
Okay.
Are we, are we good, are we sharing?
Is it, yeah, okay. So last year, as I said, we wanted to raise the capacity of all of the students to implement, all of the teachers to implement. So we did, in all year, really focused set of professional development, it wasn't a one-hit wonder. And in all of that, we did the, we learned about the equity walk indicator, indicators, we did a video, we did a calibration exercise, and then we, the best learning part, this was the calibration exercise of all of the indicators, the best learning part for us was that we were learning how to look for with the, with the two women who are experts beyond belief, India Barrows and Emily Pratt. So in the end, this, right here, after the year's work, this is what we found, was, I wish I could make it bigger if I knew I weren't blind. We found areas of strength, of course, and areas for growth. And then taking that information, we came up with four focus indicators, areas. And through those indicators, and this was the whole staff, it wasn't just the two of us, it was the entire staff collectively throughout the whole year. focus and hit on these indicators, which I can't see, cause I'm blind as a bat. And then we have a secondary tier of focus indicators as well. So this is our outline for the next steps for the entire year. And really, it's a lot of teachers pushing themselves along with their, lots of team goals have been submitted along these lines, too. They're going to choose the instructional strategies and teach towards those, and then analyze the data that comes out after it towards the specific subgroups that are appropriate for them. And write reflections on it, change their lesson plans, things like that, and then go back and choose, hopefully, two different ones. But if they have to choose the same ones because they're not mastered it yet, then that's the plan. And they would cycle that through throughout the entire year. Landing, I can't see. Landing and using the common assessment and the data from that to make any adjustments for the coming year of 25, 26. So it's a lot of focused work that the teachers are, I would almost say, happy to be doing because it's something that me, is very meaningful to them and they want their students to understand everything that they're teaching. And that's, that's goal four. Goal one.
So one, one question for you.
Do I have questions?
Yes.
You do have questions?
I do.
One, one question. So just zooming out a little bit, so the superintendent, when he was hired, had one-year evaluations, now it's a two-year timeframe. So with the, with teachers looking at what they're doing and on all of these, are all teachers, is it, is it year-to-year, or is it, are some people on two-year evaluations? And is this part of their, like, their plans each year? Is this through the evaluation process, this, or I'm just trying to understand, or is this outside of the evaluation process, other, other areas to try to improve?
So it's a combination of both. Through the observations, when we go in to look for the, in the observations, the standards that are in DESI, in the teacher rubric now, have the equity indicators entwined in them. So regardless of if it's one year or two year that they're on, they still have to meet the standards and the criteria that are set, laid out by the state, which include this. But the reason that this is part of our spotlight is because they did change the language in it, and we want them to be able to understand that, the focus of it. So by having them specifically teach towards it for two of the, two instructional strategies, teachers use 73,000 in 10 minutes, but for two of them, we want them focused on this. So it's a combination of, of both. Doesn't really matter what year, but all of their teaching should include these strategies.
Okay. Maybe we just need to, what were the equity indicators? Like, that, I think we just went so quickly. So what were you, what were the equity indicators that you were using when you were doing your walkthrough?
Okay. Do you have that?
I think, I think you do. I think the top right, you can expand.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or double-click the header, right, right there.
I actually don't think that we have all of the elements in here.
Okay.
But I can, so if we could go.
Well, and like, and you have this visual, like, that, that would be interesting to, like, what is that?
This focus area?
No, you have these little visual.
The dots?
With the dots.
Yeah. We can go back to that.
You zip by it so quickly.
We took, um, there are 20-ish of those, and we took them and put them on a big piece of paper and had all of the teachers have a red, yellow, or green dot, and they had to rate how they felt that was happening in their classroom. So those ones say, "Students can re, can openly and safely talk about experiences of stereotypes, bias, and institutional racism." And you'll see, that's the first one up here, you'll see that a lot of it is yellow. And these are teacher opinions, so they walked off throughout.
Yeah, so what we talked about, we said, something that we think is easily implemented or happens often, and then isn't so easily implemented or may not happen that often and is hard to implement or doesn't happen maybe often at all. So that was kind of our green, yellow, red. And what happened was we were able to put all of the standard language items into three categories, saying the red was gonna be real change, like that was gonna be transformational stuff for the teachers. The yellow were things that were kind of themed around student risk-taking, but, you know, we think we're giving a lot of time for kids to, you know, be vulnerable in the classroom and ask, ask questions or ask for follow-up, but it may not be happening all the time. And then the green was kind of really teacher-centered stuff where we felt we were doing it as educators, but again, it's not in that category of where do we see, you know, a lot of disparity in how we think it's happening on the other side. So it was really valuable. In fact, India had asked if, if she could borrow this activity and do it in some of the other schools, so we were happy to, to see that it was really effective. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. And those are teacher responses, no, nothing to do with student response.
All teacher, teacher response.
These ones, but we, we have other data that is student, we had student surveys.
Okay.
And then when we went, when we did the walkthroughs, we were observing the look-for's, so are students willing to take a risk? And while the atmosphere might have been created and the question was created, did they jump at that? And that's where the disconnect can happen sometimes. So it's a, they all report feeling safe in the class, the question is one that, you know, we're asking the students to answer that might be a little, not intimidating, that's not too hard of a word, but, and then do the students take the risk and answer it? The question, do they take the risk and try the activity? And that's where the, we see the difference.
And who's looking for the, the look-for's? That's just?
So it was the administration.
Okay.
Along with India and Emily.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Jilly?
Let me get his backup. So what, you know, the big district vision is to do something in this area of what to look for. We have the alignment of all the school improvement plans, all the administrative goals, the administrators all have a shared goal to do this work. We bring in Emily and India, they're using, someone had asked what they were using, it's the Department of Ed had a what-to-look-for guide, but then they pared down a little bit. And so the, the focus of the work for this year, this past year, was really to help calibrate and train the administrators for what they're looking for, but then also to, you know, to start involving teachers in that understanding of what it is when we're in the room and what kind of feedback they would like to receive. So we're sort of at that next point now where it's like, how do we get feedback to people that are receiving? So this is also the work we did ongoing throughout the year, and then Mr. Colleen organized for the summer retreat with all of our leadership team. So we've been doing this work as a district, this is sort of the high schools piece that is happening at all five schools. But each school did it a little bit differently, and that's what you're seeing with this up here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I think so. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll go on to briefly look at, I think it's worthwhile to just give you an update on, on our NEAS reaccreditation process. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a somewhat modified model from the old 10-year decennial visit. Now the, it's more of a growth mindset model and kind of more frequent check-ins rather than kind of the once every 10-year kind of pressure cooker that that experience can be. So we're in our self-reflection, I'm gonna just go right to the link here. This is on our webpage, and all of these are live links. This is from the NEAS website, accreditation cycle, that's, that's that kind of visual there. I really would just want to kind of, standards abstract, this is the five standards, kind of just in a mini summarized version. Our leadership, we have the steering committee, myself, Ms. Alonso, our STEM coordinator, Michelle Caulfield, and two faculty participants coordinators, Mr. Nosy, Mr. Osteen. We have our self-reflection committee. On the self-reflection committee, we've got a class, a student representative from each class, as well as representatives from our school council. We have chairs or co-chairs of the standards committees, and then we have students, as Succi said, she's a specific student rep to one of the standards committees. So we probably have, I'm gonna say maybe 20 or 25 students participating. Here, here's that kind of master roster there. So, so far, so good. We just had our liaison, or our kind of substitute liaison, present to the faculty and these groups on Friday. That was Carl Johnson, and he's kind of standing, he was standing in on Friday for Allison Gary, who's going to be our formal liaison, but she couldn't make it. And it went really well. We have a PD time scheduled, kind of PD time scheduled for tomorrow morning in place of our faculty meeting, excuse, our department meeting. So.
Now the, it's more of a growth mindset model and kind of more frequent check-ins rather than kind of the once every ten-year kind of pressure cooker that that experience can be. So we're in our self-reflection. I'm going to just go right to the link here. This is on our webpage. And all of these are live links. This is from the NEAS website, accreditation cycle, that's, that's that kind of visual there. I really would just want to kind of, standards abstract, this is the five standards, kind of just in a mini summarized version. Our leadership, we have the steering committee, myself, Ms. Alonso, our STEM coordinator, Michelle Caulfield, and two faculty participants coordinators, Mr. Nosy, Mr. Osteen. We have our self-reflection committee. On the self-reflection committee, we've got a class, a student representative from each class, as well as representatives from our school council. We have chairs or co-chairs of the standards committees. And then we have students, as Succi said, she's a specific student rep to one of the standards committees. So we probably have, I'm going to say maybe twenty or twenty-five students participating. Here, here's that kind of master roster there. So, so far, so good. We just had our liaison, or our kind of substitute liaison, present to the faculty and these groups on Friday. That was Carl Johnson. And he's kind of standing, he was standing in on Friday for Allison Gary, who's going to be our formal liaison, but she couldn't make it. And it, it went really well. We have a PD time scheduled, kind of PD time scheduled for tomorrow morning in place of our faculty meeting. Excuse me, our department meeting. So we have students coming in in the morning to kind of help us collect and kind of curate through some of that evidence. As Succi said, it's all about pulling the evidence together that shows that we meet the standard. The five standards, there's roughly seven to nine principles of effective practice per standard. And then probably three or four descriptors per principle. And you write essentially a, you know, a summary page for each principle that addresses the, the descriptors. And then you rate yourself against their, their rubric and say, yeah, you know, we're developing, we're doing, we're living, we're changing, and, and things like that. So I really, I think it's going to be a great, a great process. Our collaborative conference, which is the next step of this after we complete our self-reflection, will be in October of twenty-twenty-five. And then they review that, they come and visit, there'll be six people here, they'll spend, you know, two days, one night. And then in twenty-twenty-seven, we'll have had that feedback back. We'll work on that feedback and then be prepared to host the decennial visit in twenty-twenty-seven. Any questions with that?
I have none.
It's a process. All right. I think I'm going to, you know, there's a ton here. Whoops. Oh, sir, I'm closing tabs on you, sorry about that. Okay, whoops, I think I just shut you off. We'll get it back. So again, we can look at, you know, I like what the special ed department is doing with respect to their goals around some MCAS scores. And there's, there's a, I'm not going to go through those. There's a ton of embargo data under the, under this box on the slide. The MCAS data gets released tomorrow morning. So the data's here, but it's, you know, this is internal data, so we're showing it. How the specific teachers work more towards specific standards. More embargo data here, but again, general MCAS. ELA and math testing scores, okay? I would say, well, I'm not going to speak about the scores, I would think our, our efforts are in the right direction. And again, this'll, I'll fix this tomorrow morning, and then we want to get back on here, and that's my.
I feel it's a trailer for a movie.
You know, I, I was, I was kind of, you know, it's not lost on me, I get it. I get it. So, and then again, all of the presentations will, will say, here was our goal, here's our data, and then here's where we're going next. And then the, the goal for, you know, this, this year, step, next step for twenty-four, twenty-five, that information is spelled out more formally here. So my hope is that you have a good sense of how to navigate our school improvement plan. It is, it is made to, you know, provide a lot of information, but also kind of be user-friendly in that you can just kind of cruise around and, and inspect what you'd like. And I'm happy to keep talking, but in the interest of time, I don't miss a, Dr. O'Connell is here. I'll take questions or, you know, go to a specific thing, if you've got a question. Yeah.
This is general. Who, who is this available to? Is it just, like, is this available on the website?
This is on the website, yeah, all this is live on the website.
Okay, all right, so it's not just for us?
Other than the embargoed slides.
It's like every day?
I check the website almost every day, but I haven't.
Okay, I thought so.
Thank you.
And I, I was clicking through things. I, I will just say as a general comment, it's been, you know, a vast improvement over school improvement plans of the past. I appreciate that, I appreciate the information. And since every time we see you, we have to say, we wish you luck because this is your last. I know probably the, the thing you're going to miss the most is coming to the school committee for the school improvement plans. But we do appreciate the information.
No, I'm happy to present.
Being here and, you know, wish you luck in retirement. It probably seems like a long way away since we're only in September, but I don't know how many times we'll get to see you this year, so I'll say it every time I see you, so.
Thank you. So, yeah, no, I, I am, I am deeply invested in this school year, obviously, with the amount of things that we're doing. So I appreciate it, always an opportunity to, to come and, and connect, so thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
So I'll just, I'll just add on that that, you know, what we've built here, you know, from a few years ago, having, these are the five main goals. Everyone's doing an executive summary that's kind of in sync across the five schools. We try to make this the furthest thing from that, you know, five, six-page document that lives on a shelf that no one ever sees. They're all, all of these are posted to the website after they're voted on here at the school committee and accepted. And, you know, this one in particular is very interactive. It's similar to sort of how we set up the, the district strategy. But each school's plan approached in a unique way. We do have all three elementaries presenting together at, at our next meeting, but they're starting to be similar, but also distinct to have the voice of each school. So I think you'll see some real similarities here. But there are common goals that's kind of stretched across all five plans, which I think is just excellent. And as we talked about, you know, just to reiterate, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this over the years with all the departments. You know, the, the work at a high school, and it's certainly this way at the middle school and all our schools, but it's not, as much work as our two leaders do in the, in the office, the goals aren't met unless it's done by every department, every teacher in every department. So by really having that spread out here, who owns this goal? What data do we have to support? What evidence do we have that our goals are being achieved? And so wonderful work to you and to everyone who's been a part of this. So thank you so much.
So before we move on, since we do have to vote to accept these officially, I figure since we have two different agenda items.
Yeah.
If I can, if I can have a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school improvement plan from the high school?
So moved?
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, passes, five, zero?
We might have a, a motion or a recommendation to do all of these in early October in the future because of this embargo thing. Then you can actually bring the data into the presentation.
Yeah.
It's kind of by accident that we're splitting them up, but it's kind of making more and more sense to include that as well. I'm going to bring up, Kathy, did you want to do the PowerPoint?
Yeah, they're both.
They're both up here, yeah?
Yeah.
So let me just close out here. So I've got the, this one first. So you can just go back. You know what I'll do is I will, I'll control at home, so you just control. You want to start with this one?
No, I'll start with the plan.
Start with the plan.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. My assistant principal is here too, Laura Oliveto. Oops. Definitely, I feel like this is low, but I definitely want to acknowledge her help. She does sit on the school council, which is the group that helped create this document, along with actually one of our newly PTS teachers, Kathleen Kerwin, is part of the, was part and will continue to be part of the school council. I think that I'll just begin briefly, just to provide an overview of the middle school's school improvement plan because it's definitely set up differently, a little bit more traditionally, I would say. And so just at the beginning is the school council. It is a law for schools to have a school council. There's, you know, a, a good amount of formality to the process. And, you know, it's an open meeting. We've actually had a guest, Jeff Simons has visited us in the past. Our, our, you know, our council membership is a parody of, we have two parents, two, two administrators with Ms. Oliveto and myself, two teachers, and most recently just one community member. We tried to have two, but most recently we've had one community member. We meet monthly. You can see the council members from last year, our meeting dates. And this year, our superintendent has asked us to consider adding an executive summary, which just kind of is full of information about our, our goals and what, what kind of drives the school improvement plan. And then our goals, at the middle school, we try to align our goals, obviously, to the district goals, to the, to the district mission, to the student experience, and to the, the North Reading Middle School mission. And then really, it's the big rocks, teaching and learning, student support services, and DEIB. So when you look at the goals, which I'm going to go through the goals in the PowerPoint, but the goals are all there. These are this new, the new goals for this year are here. So there's teaching and learning, Big Rock. So there's five teaching and learning goals. And then student support services, you can see that there are three goals for student support services. And then DEIB has two goals. And then there's some information, some demographic information, some staffing information. Kind of our approach at the middle school is that team model that's really essential, core practice of middle schools. A little bit about special education at the middle school. And then I think it's just important to draw your attention to the latter part of the document because it has all the updates from this past year. So the, these were the goals for the previous year, and then there's a hyperlink under each one that basically has all the data with a little bit of a narrative. So that's the plan. It is not on the website currently because it is not a live document. It certainly could be, but I wanted to wait for your approval before putting it there. So that's the actual plan. The presentation, obviously, just acknowledging our school council members. Gail Demory and Kathleen Kerwin, as I said, were our two teachers. Amy Luckowicz has been a longstanding community member, a great partner with us. Linda Emery and Kerry Antonuccio. And then our highlights that I just want to just kind of celebrate are several things that we are in year two of professional learning communities. So last year, we, we kind of flipped our model for faculty meetings and had teachers meet in pods of professional learning communities to study and talk about ideas that were important to them. We, I, I have a whole slide on professional learning communities that I'll get to. We also had year two of restorative practices, which I think many of you know is something that we're really excited about at the middle school. Curriculum mapping is something at the middle school that we're also working on year two, where we're, we're really going deep into our unit development and really focusing on instruction and assessment. As you heard from the high school, we also participated in equity walks, learning walks, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. Celtic's playbook was, was something that I shared with the school committee in March that we were really excited about and hope to continue again this year. Peer mediation is something new this year that, that we're excited about, that I want to talk about. The planning for it began last year, and then also my cap. So those are just the points that I would like to kind of share with you tonight in, in celebrating. And many of these, if not all of these, are continuing in some form for this coming year. So the, we're sort of, I mean, I'm, excuse me, the professional learning communities, those were the topics from last year, and those were choice by staff. So staff, I asked, you know, staff to generate the list and then to select their top three choices. We were able to give everybody their first choice. So they met in, in small and large groups depending on the topics. They met, last year they met, I think, six times. I myself participated in the restorative practices advanced group, and Ms. Oliveto also did. And so, and then there was a group on, that focused on DEIB, one that focused on interdisciplinary learning and collaboration, co-teaching, classroom management, and grading. And this year, we're starting again in October. Some of the, some of the topics are continuing and others are replacing those. We have a lot of staff whose first choice is restorative practices for this coming school year. So really building momentum, and many people who have not yet participated in, in a training or a PLC on professional, on restorative practices are wanting to learn more about it. So those are our, our PLCs, was something that I wanted to share. And this year, I'm sorry, this year we're going with the format of every other month. So September was faculty, October will be a professional learning community, November will be faculty, December will be professional learning community. So they'll go back and forth and provide opportunity for the PLCs to share what they're learning and, and bigger takeaways that we can share with the whole staff. Restorative practices, again, you've heard me, many of you have heard me talk about a lot. In, in this, you know, last year we focused on community circles, which are kind of the proactive, community-building, really kind of relationship-building, really connected to DEIB work as well, making everybody feel like they're an important member of our, of our school in a smaller circle. We did homeroom circles. Many, many teachers chose to do circles on their own. We had more staff trained on the restorative practices framework. And the administrators and the guidance department, led by our adjustment counselor, Mike Hirsch, focused on restorative chats. That's our approach to restoring when harm is done, when there's conflict. And, and our SEL lessons, last year, I think we had seven of them, our tier-one SEL lessons. We also, last year, we provided an opportunity for teachers to either teach the SEL lesson in a traditional way or implement it in a circle. So we gave teachers choice. But this year, this new coming year, all of our SEL lessons will be circle-based. So we're really kind of, in this coming school year, in our third year, we're really focusing on the circles being just our standard way that we implement SEL lessons. And the restorative chats are continuing with, with training focusing on helping teachers understand that they too can facilitate restorative chats if there's conflict in their classroom, if there's, you know, an issue with a student. The curriculum mapping is, again, something that we're continuing. This, this will be our third year. So we started, not last year, the year before, with looking at our scope and sequence. And basically, all that is, is looking at the ten-month school year and breaking down, aligning with the standards, what resources and curriculum materials we're going to use and assessments we're going to use to teach the standards. Last year, we had teachers start building units. And it isn't to say that they hadn't historically created units. This is, this is something that should be ongoing. It should be happening constantly, revising, reflecting after you teach a unit, you know, getting student feedback, looking at assessment results, comparing, you know, with your grade-level colleague. And so this year, we're really laser focusing on one unit. Everybody's going to end the year with one fully completed unit that has assessments, hyperlinks, you know, a, a feedback component. And we think the reasons for doing that, I think, we think are obvious. But one of the big ones is to help with, with our intervention model, so our NTSS model, to improve vertical alignment so that, you know, the six, seven, eight alignment, but also the eight to nine alignment, the five to six alignment, to help with co-teaching. So anytime there's another adult, especially a licensed adult in a classroom, it's a co-teaching opportunity, and they can only help as, as much as they know what's happening in the, in the lesson. So to have the maps available, to have them as a resource so someone can say, hey, what's happening next week? And it's all right there, they, will be more effective. Will also help with the new IEP, which is a big, you know, a big transition, having that material available. And that, this curriculum, these resources, as I said, did exist, have existed. Dr. Daly, when he was the assistant superintendent, you know, had teachers doing this work. It's just something that should constantly be revisited, and we are taking an opportunity to revisit it. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't advance. It's not what I want to do. It got out of slideshow mode for some reason. I'm in a PDF now, but I don't see the advance. Oh, sorry. Okay, so just quickly, because I know you, you heard a lot from the high school. So the middle school also had our own equity walks. I, I think that we actually, just to shout out to the middle school, I think we actually kind of initiated the idea with India and Emily back in twenty, May of twenty-twenty-three. We, last year, got through sixty-four classrooms. So that was India, India Barrows, Emily, Pat, Laura Oliveto, and myself. Sixty-four classrooms representing forty-seven teachers. So that's a lot of visibility, a lot of walking through. And really, the money, the most important part of that was sitting down and talking about what did you see? What, what stood out to you? So the four of us would debrief and talk about those what-to-look-fours, to calibrate, really for Laura and I, to calibrate our sense of how we can help teachers by giving them feedback that is encouraging and supporting, but also really laser-focused on the new classroom teacher rubric, which is all about culturally responsive teaching. And, you know, we're excited about that work. Our plan for this year coming up is to include the, the DEIB professional learning community and have teachers possibly begin to do this work with us and in a peer observation model. So that, to have, I think that the greatest work that administrator can do with instruction is to really calibrate that sense of what good teaching looks, looks like throughout the entire school community. So the more that teachers can see each other teaching. So the more that teachers can see each other teaching, the more that teachers can talk about and, and de-privatize their practice, the likely, the more likely that their practice will improve. So that's our goal is to continue those walks, maybe less so with Emily and India and more so with other teachers. Celtics playbook initiative, again, I spoke about this in March. This was something that we participated in with NRHS. So we had some high school trainers teaching middle school students how to work with very complex social conflict. And it was pretty powerful. We had two workshops last year. This year, we're applying, we don't know if we'll be accepted. We're applying to participate again. I will be the lead administrator in the application. Again, if we're accepted, there'll be a middle school lead teacher, Jessica Lockley. And then we're, you know, looking to the high school again for students to help be the train, the student trainers. I'm sure we can find middle school students to participate. And this year, there will be four workshops. Last year, there were two, this year there will be four is the, is the requirement for the program. And also something really exciting this year coming up is that they, the Celtics playbook initiative wants schools to partner with a sister school or a brother school. So we'll have another school who may have a different perspective or a different level of diversity to share the, the, one, one of the four workshops will be a combined effort with that school. That would be pretty neat. So hopefully we'll get accepted and be able to participate again. Our peer mediation planning, so last year we did all the planning and in August, I'm happy to share that we trained nine middle school students and nine high school students. Ms. Alonso, Ms. Olivetto and myself also were trained along with Ms. O'Brien, our, our teacher. It's real, we're really excited about this idea to, to train kids and they're already trained, they're just waiting for conflict, which seems a little odd, but to train them with the skills to facilitate conflict. And those 18 kids were amazing. They were amazing, like huge round of applause for those kids. The high school kids were such great role models, so supportive, so encouraging. And the middle school students were brave and courageous and participated full on. And so we're, we're really excited and we think it goes really nicely with the restorative practices work that we're doing as well, so that we can now have kids talking with kids when conflict, lower level conflict, not, not bullying or, or anything like that, but lower level conflict. We're excited to be able to use these trainers. We just don't, we just haven't had much conflict yet, which is a great thing. I think this is the last one. My cap planning with thanks to Dr. Daley. Dr. Daley had applied for a grant last year that came through with a focus on middle school, which was something that I really, it wasn't on my radar. And when he explained it to me and I, I said, what, this is so needed. It's, it, so last year was a planning year. We had a middle school team that attended several trainings from the Department of Education. And we, you know, presented to Dr. Daley a plan for this coming year where we will be implementing three lessons to the whole school, all students around career and academic planning. So for them to begin to think about what are their interests? How do those interests align with careers? What are the responsibilities and the training requirements for those careers? And I'm the first one to say that I wish I had that in middle school. I just kind of like fell into teaching and I'm very grateful for, for the career, but I, no one really ever talked to me about what are your interests? You know, I, I think it's just fantastic. And so we're using a technology MIFA, which some of you may know is a financial planning tool, but it's also an academic planning tool. And we're going to be using that with the middle school students where they're going to create a portfolio of like a resume and job interests. And if anything, as they transition to high school, it'd be something for them to look at when they begin to think about what's going to happen after high school. So we're really excited about that and appreciative to Dr. Daley. So these are the goals for, those were the shout outs, the celebrations. These are the goals for next year, continuing with MCAS for both math and ELA, looking at the children who, and again, those scores are embargoed, but we know who they are. The kids who did not meet expectations, we're laser focusing on those kids. They, if they did not meet or partially met, we're focusing on those kids and we want to see their growth percentile to be above 50, which means, you know, they're getting closer to meeting the, and perhaps maybe would meet the, the expectation if they hit that growth percentile. So those are the ELA and math goals. The science goal, we can't use growth percentile because it's fifth and eighth grade. So there isn't an SGP. So we're using our internal common assessment data. And we're saying that by 80%, by the end of the year, 80% of students will demonstrate grade level competency on the grade eight science standards. And then we haven't had a social studies goal since I've been here, I don't think, 13 years or so, 14 years. So this year, because social studies is becoming an MCAS subject again, I used to be a social studies teacher and it, it used to be a part of the MCAS, but it is now returning. And so we created a social studies goal. Again, no SGP because it's just in eighth grade at the middle school, but talking about the social studies common assessment data, looking for that grade level standards mastery. And then the goal statement five is around the curriculum mapping, just to make sure that we're including the training and the professional development that is needed for our teachers to understand the process through which to create these units. Student support services, the first goal deals with MTSS. So making sure that our intervention system is working by tracking those kids. We, we do two rounds of interventions in the fall and the spring and then looking at their MCAS data to see that they're, they are making progress, hopefully more progress than, than is typical, so that they can close the, the gaps that they may have. And then goal statement two is around office referrals and we're looking again for that peer mediation to pop in there and maybe help with reducing office referrals. If we're able to get ahead of minor conflicts by having kids talk it out and figure out a plan, perhaps they won't end up in the office because they said something, you know, unkind or did something unkind because they were frustrated. And then this goal statement three has to do with my cap. So we're hoping that by the end of the year, students and staff will demonstrate a stronger understanding of that whole academic planning. It's usually something that waits till high school or historically has been something that waits till high school. So we're really excited to start that conversation now. And then two more, our DEIB goals are that we're really hoping, you know, I was just working on the, the student questionnaire that we give them in the fall about how they feel about the school, how they feel about their sense of belonging. And we're really hoping to see with the DEIB work, in the classroom instruction changing with the circles, with the peer mediation, we're really hoping to see improvements in our students' perception of how they feel about school. And then this last one is just talking about the learning walks that again, the middle school's approach this coming school year will be to use our PLC model to try to implement some, some peer observations to the, to the learning walks. I know that was a lot, but that's, that's the highlights, that's the plan. I don't know if there's any questions.
Questions?
I have a few. I'm going to try to remember them.
Yeah, I got a few.
Scott has a crib sheet. First of all, I'm, I'm glad to see the social studies back up there too. That's great. In reference to the MTSS goal of looking at improvement, was that a goal last year?
It was.
And did you, what was the result of that?
I can show you. It was mixed, but I can show you exactly.
And if it was mixed, do you know why it was mixed?
No, but I'm already having conversations with teachers about what did you do?
Okay.
Because, so that's all there for, I don't, I can't imagine that you'll be able to, I was going to try to make it larger.
I can read it.
Okay. So sixth grade, 26 stu-, I won't go through it all, but sixth grade, 26 students participated in MTSS and then ten, only 10 of those students, their SGP increased. Now, MTSS is one variable, clearly, there are many other variables, but so you can see in grade seven, 26 students participated in ELA MTSS, 17 students increased. So the percentage is much higher. So why is that? So that's a conversation. What did you do in seventh grade during MTSS? And let's see what they did in sixth grade. Same thing in math. I mean, I've already talked to the math, look at the, to me, I was kind of like, wow, that's fantastic. So yes, I have the data, but it's mixed.
And you're looking at what was done?
Absolute, absolutely.
Further than I even was hoping.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then the final question, my cap?
Yes.
Is that for all grades in middle school?
Yes.
Okay. That's going to be implemented this year?
Yeah, this year, because it's brand new, all three grades are going to get the same lesson. Next year, the, we're going to start changing at each grade level. Next year, it'll be two grades will have the same lesson, but eventually the current sixth graders will have a different lesson every year. But this year, the eighth grade, you know, it's, it's hard to phase something like that in. So that this year, everybody will get the same three, there's three lessons. They'll be spread out throughout the year.
And are those, what class are those given in?
It's an extended homeroom block. Everybody, the whole school will stop and we run a flex block and we implement the, the first one is in a couple of weeks in October.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Fantastic, thank you.
Dr. Daley?
I could just add to that. So this was something that Dr. O'Connell was highly involved in last year. He wrote the grant with a focus on middle school, but also high school. So high school guidance and administrators and folks participated last year. This year, Dr. O'Connell actually helped to write the grant, thank you, helped to write the grant with me. We did receive the grant. We haven't announced it yet because there's still, it's just pending funding. Once we do, but there, there will be a, a larger focus on increasing the high school piece. So this is going to be a six to 12 focus with similar goals and conversations that will carry through. They do very important work in high school and they always have around this, but this will increase the amount of explicit conversation and also focus on career as much as we focus about college planning. So there's a lot of work that's going to start in sixth grade and it's going to carry through. So we're, we're very thankful to have received that.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Grant. We haven't got the funding yet, but they did when they, we had our call this year, they said, think big. So we, we put in, and it was a lot of work this summer, but we, we're looking forward to sharing that as soon as it gets approved.
Thinking about a career day in the spring possibly and getting some community involvement and never too early to start those wheels spinning.
Yeah, I agree. I would have loved to have something like my cap.
Yeah.
Just the Celtics playbook, just wanted to know a little bit more about that. Do you remember the topics that were addressed or do you know which ones are going to be addressed this year?
Well, this, the high school students will help determine which ones as a whole play, there's literally a playbook of scenarios. I believe there was one about an off, like a racial comment at a football practice, somebody saying something that they shouldn't have said. And then I, I believe that there was one, I don't know if Mr. Clean's on the call.
At a restaurant, maybe?
Yeah, someone making a joke that was.
You might chime in.
Yeah, yeah. But there's a whole book and the scenarios are very realistic. There are things that unfortunately could absolutely happen and it gives students a chance to talk about what would you do? And the, the high school students were great last year, but they're not really leading them, the middle school kids to an answer, just, just facilitating dialogue. I do recall that last year, I attended both workshops, middle school kids, A, wanted to do a third one, we just didn't have time last year. And B, there was some request for religion, for there to be some discussion about or a scenario based on different religions, which is interesting that kids would be curious about how to handle that.
No, that's great. And I love that there are situations that could come up because I'm just as a parent too of a fifth grader, almost a middle school, starting to think about these things, I would also like some interruption. And the, the peer mediation, are those 18 students chosen by the administration or do they volunteer?
They volunteered, they applied.
Okay.
So we had more applicant, we only had nine spots and we had more applicants than we had spots. So we went through, there was a, a group, myself, Ms. Olivetto, our adjustment counselor and our art teacher, Ms. O'Brien, who has volunteered to be the teacher leader this year for peer mediation. And we went through the applications and there was like a little narrative as to, you know, why do you want to be a part of this? And we chose the nine students who we thought would, you know, be the, be the best at the time for the, but we're hoping to train more next year.
Right, yeah.
What's the process for introducing the peer mediation? I know we haven't had a ton of conflict in school, which is a great thing, but I also know conflict happens daily.
So we created, we created a, and I, I was thinking I was in my drive, we created a referral form for guidance counselors right now only. Guidance counselors or myself and Ms. Olivetto would fill out this referral form, like what was the conflict, who are the students involved, you know, grade level, what happened? It would go to the teacher leader, Ms. O'Brien. She's going to come back to Ms. Olivetto and I, I'm sure. And we'll discuss it, we'll identify the peer mediators, fill them in a little bit. The, the students in having the conflict also right now wouldn't really kind of need to agree that they want to do this. It's not, we're not going to force it on them, but if they're in agreement, we align the mediators, we find a time during the day that's, there's never a good time, but this is being proactive. If we get ahead of a conflict, students are going to be able to focus and engage in class much better. So we find a time and the students really do it themselves. Ms. O'Brien will be in very close proximity, but she won't be sitting with them. They do the, the facilitation themselves of the, of talking. We, the three-day training was amazing. They have a booklet, they have resources, they have handouts. So I, I'll keep you posted, but.
I think that's great to have that first backstop available. That is an easy step.
Yeah.
Do the students, are they aware they can go to guidance and, and ask for, for mediation? Or how do they know, the average middle schooler know that?
Yeah, we have a, we have a student referral form called the guidance check-in form. So anytime students want to make an appointment with their guidance counselor for any reason, for academic, for conflict, for something at home, they just fill out the guidance, it's called the guidance check-in form. And I do believe, I would say 99% of our students know where it is. We showed them on the first day of school, it's on clever. And they just fill that in and then their guidance counselor meets with them and that, they would be the ones more than likely who would fill out the peer mediation referral form. And we, now I, I'm excited to get one going, but I'm not excited to get one going. Yes.
It's going to be a strange question, but how do we measure success in that program? What I mean by that is do we get feedback from the kids? Do we get feedback from like, I mean, it sounds like a great program and I'm a big fan of it, but how do you measure whether it's working in comparison to traditional methods?
Yeah, well, one point, one day, I'm a big data point, quantitative data point. I think the qualitative piece is very important by talking to kids, getting feedback from the kids, but the office referrals. So if office referrals reduce, usually office referrals are from student to student conflict, not always, sometimes it's a teacher to student issue, but oftentimes it's a conflict that doesn't get addressed initially and then it lingers and it lingers and then something happens, whether it's physical or verbal. So if that reduces, we can't obviously directly correlate that to peer mediation, but that, if we triangulate that with some feedback from the kids, we might be able to say, hey, it seems like it's working.
That makes sense.
So I, I have a few questions and again, so I think, love the peer mediation model, obviously. The, a couple of quick questions. Number one, restorative practices versus peer mediation, like what sort of conflict would go to one versus the other? Cause they seem to be both trying to address similar sort of problems.
I think it's with the peer mediation, we're starting with the softest, smallest. Like sometimes, you know, Jim, I'll give you a quick example, gym class, somebody throws a ball and it hits somebody, they immediately think that they did it on purpose, they're really upset, they, they then, you know, slam their locker. Low level, we talk about it, I didn't do it on purpose, that, that would be a peer mediation. Restorative chat would be when the conflict, like I said a minute ago, built and built and built and all of a sudden there's a, a text message sent that's really hurtful or there's, you know, a, you know, a, a physical altercation or something where harm, significant harm has been done. So the peer mediation is really not for that level. So to me, that would be, that would be the difference. Do you agree, Ms. Olivetto?
Yeah, I, I think the hope is that peer mediation will reduce the need for, you know, restorative chats, I believe has certainly been effective in what we've seen so far. And then we're hoping we add this layer and that's going to even further reduce the office referrals, the need for restorative chats. We're hoping to address actions sooner and having, empowering the kids to do so.
And could the peer mediators then actually refer it up and say, actually, I think it's deeper than this? And could they actually say, we actually need something more than this?
They can, they could, after they're done.
Right.
The ideal situation is they end with an agreement, that both parties having the conflict come to an agreement. But the trainers told us that doesn't always happen. And that's a real good life lesson for children as well. Like you're not always going to have a happy ending. And then they would, they would debrief with Ms. O'Brien and/or Ms. Olivetto and I. And then obviously we're going to have notes of, of the conflict and follow up with what, what needs to happen next if it's an adult intervention.
And then for the mediators, assuming this program continues year over year, once they're trained, would they, would those students be welcomed back or do they apply each year again?
Oh, I think they would be, I think they would be welcomed back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if like, it was like you were going to try to get different people each year or they could stay with it or.
Well.
Obviously they'd have to commit to it each year, but if they wanted to, would they stay with it?
Our nine, four or five of them are, are eighth graders. So they're going to go on to the high school. So we're going to need a new group of four or five current sixth graders. And then the, the, will be eighth graders would stay on.
And then with a couple of not, not in the, not in the. And then with a couple of, not, not in the, not in the, first of all, by the way, I like a good PowerPoint because I'm old. And so, I appreciate a PowerPoint. But a couple of things that, that weren't in there. Number one, can you talk, because we are going to be talking about budget a lot this year. And I know some of the newer programs at the middle school were the computer science and foreign language blocks. And so, I'm just curious if you can comment a little bit on how that's been received and how that has, you know, impacted the education of, at the middle school.
Yeah, I think that we're, with world language, Ms. Alonso and I and, and I'm sure Mr. Lepret and Ms. Oliveto. But certainly, Ms. Alonso and I and the, the secondary world language leader have had discussions about the current data of what that looks like when, when students are, are getting to the high school. And I will say, we're not where we'd like to be in terms of the preparedness of high schools, um, middle school students to take advanced world language classes. So, we really do need to look at our world language model to see, you know, exactly what we might need to do to help them be better prepared for high school. I think it's wonderful that we're able to offer that, you know, world language in sixth grade. I think, you know, it's some, some districts are able to provide it even earlier, but starting in sixth grade, I think it's wonderful. We don't have a lot of, certainly, there's, there's no world language MCAS. So, any data that we have is internal data. So, we're looking at the high school data, like the stamp data and the data that the high school's collecting that's a little bit more formal. And we're not where we, where we would like to be. So, we're, we are in talks and we're working on sharing, eighth, eighth and ninth grade sharing. So, Spanish one in ninth grade share, or whatever grade it might be, sharing with our eighth grade Spanish one teachers. And with computer science, I think, I, I, I think there's a huge bias on my part toward computer science. I think it's really important that we're giving students these skills. However, with it, the rapidly changing, with AI and programming, you know, I have a son that's a, a software developer. I, the AI is changing everything. So, I think we need, also need to look at our, our program and what we're teaching kids. I mean, we actually have two computer science teachers in the room right now. So, I think, yeah, they're experts. So, I, I want to be careful with what I say because I want to stay in my lane. But, yeah, we're definitely looking at all programs and, and having, you know, lots of conversations with Mr. Conley and Dr. Daly.
And then my, my final question is, so the comment first is, the thing that I think that was done in the middle school that I liked more than anything in the history of the middle school was the book club.
Yes.
Years ago.
I wonder.
You remember, but wonder, yeah, where it was, it was just the students, but it was the teachers, it was the community members. They all read the same book at the same time.
Yeah, it was pretty awesome.
And as, as things have gotten a little more divisive in the town in the last few years, I'm wondering if there's ever a thought about doing something like that again to bring together.
I think about it all the time and I think I'm hesitant to redo what we did because it was so special and so, so unique.
It was a while ago now.
It was. We were in the old gym. We were in the old gym. I know. Uh, it's on my mind and I think it would be a really nice community outreach.
Yeah.
So, I will give it good thought.
Good suggestion. K-12 Action Team. We've talked about it at CIT.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whoever does, I, I don't know where it would, would lead from, but I just remember, that was before I was on, I think it was before I was on the school committee.
Who gets to pick the book?
What I, well, I, see, I was leaning away from a book and I, I just would say that with our community, the community circles are really powerful. And I don't know if any of you in your travels around have participated in the community circle, but they're incredibly grounding, incredibly authentic, incredibly real, and you instantly bond. And it would be really nice to bring community members into those community circles, which is similar to what we did with the book. We, each homeroom kind of adopted a senior, uh, you know, from the senior center. And so, if we can, we just need to get our legs on us with the community circles, make sure we've got it solid with the kids and the teachers. And then bring in, you know, a, a community member for each homeroom to really kind of build that connection, I think would be really special.
I mean, the, the only thing I would say about the, again, I'm not saying that couldn't, shouldn't do that also. But like, the only thing about the book is just, I remember that like, I heard about it online, like, oh, people are doing this. And then other people, so like even if you weren't invited into that and you weren't the one doing it.
Yeah.
It's just something you could very passively do on the side.
Yeah.
It was good. It was.
It was great.
It was interesting, so.
I love a good book club.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
Dr. Daly?
Just want to share a couple of things. Thank you to Dr. O'Connell and Ms. Oliveto for a great presentation. The work that's being done, you know, they're really modeling to, a lot of the work that we're doing with Emily and India through that shared model, you know, universally designing their faculty meetings. So, that's, I don't know if that was clear, but what they're doing and it's happening at other schools and it's happening at different ways in each school, giving teachers a lot of choice in which groups are involved in and what study they're going to do. As opposed to the typical faculty meeting, we would think about where someone might say, oh, you know, this could have been an email. This could have been a memo, right? So, really trying to think about it in a different way. And I think it's being really well received across all the schools that are doing this in different ways. When we talk about budget and we think about how we're implementing that model, I know Mr. Buckley's going to be on a panel at the MASCE in a few weeks. This is what we're talking about, the, the equity walks, getting into classrooms. But again, doing that work with two educators that are in these coordinator roles across multiple districts. So, we're only paying a fraction of that salary, a shared, a shared fraction. And doing tremendous work that we're able to share out and replicate. I also want to just take one moment to, I haven't decided yet and we've only got one other school committee meeting before the election, whether I will publicly take a position on the ballot questions. I know that our, our association has, we talked about it a little bit last week. I will just say that you can see how we've always appropriately used MCAS data in our district to frame our goals. We get a lot of positive feedback and information from that data and we use that information very well. One concern that I have from a lot of what I've heard for yes on question two is that this will eliminate the test. It will eliminate, it will, we'll be spending more time on X and Y and Z. It's important that people understand that the test still remains, that it's a federal legislation. And a concern I would have is that we're still doing all this testing, but the data is not as meaningful. For those of us that were around back when MCAS first started in those first few years, when the data wasn't meaningful and people's idea was, well, it doesn't count. The data, it was a lot of time spent on data that was not as meaningful as this data is now. And so, to have a standardized mechanism that we can look at, I mean, we all give tests, we give grades. But for us in our classrooms, to be able to look at across grades, across schools, there's a lot that's wrong with standardized testing. But everyone's under those same conditions. That data has proved meaningful. We've kept it in that proper place. So, I do want to share those ideas, you know, this is really important to us, all of our administrators, all of our teachers. When that data comes out, you can see some of that data. We've used that preliminary data already to make, you know, placement decisions, classroom decisions, curriculum decisions. MCAS in its, you know, in its design is to test our curriculum. So, I agree with that part where we're not, you know, having the high stakes. It's not really about individual students passing, but we have to just keep in mind what this means overall as a system. And I, I am wrestling with a little bit about how that, you know, our association is taking a position and, and, you know, there's, there's many reasons for that. So, just wanted to frame that a little bit here, but it is the backbone of all of our school improvement plans and most of our school improvement goals.
Is the data connected to funding at all?
Is the data connected to funding?
Yeah.
MCAS?
With our scores, is anything connected to funding?
In certain situations, if our accountability level was to get to a certain place, it certainly is connected to funding in that respect. There's a lot of grants that we would be eligible for if we were lower achieving in MCAS. We're in, we're in sort of a place where we're not getting necessarily funding for that. I know individual students are getting scholarships based on scores and based on awards. Uh, but there's certainly many different ways that those scores and the accountability system that comes along with it are connected to funding. Wouldn't necessarily be explicitly that if we didn't do the testing, we wouldn't get funding. But there's many different connections over time. So, that is a concern that I have though is just the idea that this means, you know, MCAS doesn't count anymore. And then the data now is not as valuable as it should be, right? So, whichever way this goes with the ballot, I think our messaging moving forward needs to be, there's still a lot of value in taking this test very seriously for the way we use it here. But that's a lot harder to try to overcome that. Like I, I referenced, I know those of us that were in the classroom in 99, 2000, right before it counted, people weren't taking it very seriously and the data wasn't very useful. Took us a few years to get there. Even when we had different pockets of switching over testing, it took a few years for that data to be as useful as it is right now. So, just something to think about as we, you know, as we discuss this a little bit before the election. Thank you very much for all your presentations tonight.
So, we have to, we still have to vote. I think we could go, I might take a different position than you, than you on some of the ballot stuff. So, we'll, but for, for, for the middle school plan, we do need a, a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 school, school improvement plan for the middle school.
So moved?
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Passes by zero. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming tonight. We very much appreciate it. Now, we move on. It'll back up here. Grab your mics, too. Now, that has, we're good. We're good.
We will discuss the town meeting warrants, but you should think about if you are going to want to put on the agenda the ballot question. You know, that's something to think about as a group as well.
Yeah, we can talk about it. See. Okay, so, next thing is the North Reading High School principal search timeline. Dr. Daly, you want to?
Very much.
Lead us in this discussion?
So, thank you very much. As was alluded to earlier, Mr. Lepret is retiring at the end of the school year. This is a very similar timeline that we followed in the past for other very important positions in the district. And so, what we've laid out here are the steps that we will be taking for, for this search timeline. So, the plan would be in October, November 2024, I would lead some virtual focus groups, perhaps some in-person focus groups with NRHS parents and staff and students as well. Should say students in there as well. And we did begin some of that work today with our student reps to the school committee. They shared that they would like to be in person during the school day, during the, the power block period where we've met in the past for different things. So, there'll be student focus groups as well. From there, we'll gather information about what kind of candidates we should be looking at, what kind of questions we should be asking. We then would post the position around October 21st. The.
Is that an external and internal search or do we know yet?
So, this will be a full external and internal search. It'll be open to anyone that's, that's interested. We will have 12 committee members. It would be myself, a central office team member. The assistant principal of the high school, if she is not going to run for the position, which I think she is thinking of possibly putting in there. In that case, we would have our middle school administrator on there as well. We would have two parents, two teachers from North Reading High School, someone that's in that role of school nurse or psychologist or counselor. They really work as a, a close team with the high school principal. We would have at least one parent professional from North Reading High School. There are two openings for administrative assistants who will work very closely with the principal. And then we would have a school committee member. So, we would want to start thinking about who that school committee member would be. Then after about a month, we would have all applications due, so a nice open period there to, to get candidates. We would then be conducting our application reviews, scheduling interviews around the end of November. We would have interviews in early December and name our finalists by the middle of December. That's our, our plan. We would then roll over into early January with some site visits. That would involve people coming to the district and also possibly having some visits to other districts to get to know more about the candidates there. We would then have, the finalists would meet with the administrative council and perhaps the full leadership team in early January. We've identified January 9th. And we would set up a parallel meetings with student panels. Students today had some great ideas about extending that to not just school council leaders, but perhaps different facets of the school, maybe club leaders, maybe captains of athletic teams, just to get a, a wide range of students who are involved in those panels. We would then name the principal at the school committee in January 27th. And the person's start date would be July 1st. So, this is the proposed idea. If it's approved tonight, I'll start right away sharing this out and starting to set up dates for focus groups, but I'm also open to feedback or suggestions in the process.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I mean, the first one is, it says just discussion on here. You want, you want us to officially approve this?
If, I would take feedback and I think it's, it's, it's just a discussion, yeah.
So, the, so the, the big question I have is, can you clarify exactly what the committee is? The committee that you're getting, what, what they're doing? Like, for example, with, when we searched for the superintendent before.
Yeah.
The committee, they, we wanted them to vet who was an appropriate candidate to put forward. And that's all they did. And then the school committee was the one that made the decision.
Yeah.
So, the committee was only seeing, do they meet the minimum qualifications or not? And then the school committee was the one that decided between the three in that situation that met the minimum requirement. Is that the same thing here? Is, is the goal to try to name a couple finalists? Because ultimately, this is your hire, not the committee's hire.
Correct.
So, can you be clear about exactly what, what is being asked of the committee? And at each step, stop, like, what is being asked for you to then be able to make the final decision?
Sure. Very similar to when we have teacher hiring committees and administrator hiring committees. Their, their advisory to the decision that's ultimately my decision to be made. So, I'm bringing together this representative group. So, I'm kind of getting information from all stakeholders about what they'd like to see. That'll help us inform who's selected for the interviews. From there, the interview committee will interview the initial interviews, let's say, six or eight people, with the goal of getting it down to about three. From those three, I will then bring it to the smaller groups of the students and the, the administrative council. And from there, I would make that decision.
But at any point in time, just to be clear, like, if you like the candidate that wasn't put forth as one of the finalists, you could still move them forward as a finalist. You could still do it up. I mean, ultimately, it is a superintendent's decision, correct?
Yep. It, it is. And I would do that if, if I really felt that way. But I'm also, having been through multiple searches for both Michael's position and Cynthia's position, I'm pretty confident that I will be in alignment with the group. And I'm going to listen very strongly to that representative group. If there's someone there that has a different opinion from me, you know, I'm hoping that we can at least, there's one of the three that I'll be consistent with. But yes, I, and I, and I'm, this is a very important hire. Probably I've said it, this could be the, the most important hire I have. This is a very important position that has not opened in this district in many, many years. Between Mr. Lepret and Mr. Bernard before, it's been over, it's been 20 years. That team has been here. So, this is a big change for our district and for our school. I'm not afraid to do multiple searches and, and change this timeline. I did two for Michael and three for Cynthia. And I'm not afraid of doing that either because I want to make sure we have the right person. We have a great runway here of lead time and I hope that that gets people who are, who are in that area. I will say off the top that I am not personally looking for someone. I, I'm, I'm not in a place where we absolutely need someone who has been a principal for 10 years already. I think we're in a place where we've had veteran leadership. I've been here for a while. The foundation around this person has a lot of experience, including Dr. O'Connell and others. I think we could get someone who's moving into that role, someone who's been a principal for a few years. I don't think we need someone that's run there. I think we're moving in a right direction as you saw tonight. And we want someone to bring in their own ideas and to steer us forward. But I don't think we need a, a complete change. And that's sort of my bias going into this, that I'm willing to listen a lot to people to hear what, what, what they want to hear in the community.
So, three, three other quick questions. Number one, do you decide who is on the committee? Would, would you be the one that decides, like if, if five parents were to apply, would you be the one deciding?
I would.
Okay.
Yep. I would make, so I would put out this information to everyone, take the interested and make some selections from there based on that. And some of these, you know, at times, people wear multiple hats. I have to weigh between, there's value in that. Like, I'm also a parent, but I'm also a teacher. like, I'm also a parent, but I'm also a teacher, and then there's a value in having someone who's strictly thinking from one point of view.
The second would be, since I don't know what standard, what would be a standard? Is interviewing at this timeframe standard for a principal hire at the end of the, or is this earlier? Cause, just because I think that's a challenge that's happened when we haven't found positions before.
Yeah.
It's that, like, oh, it's not what people are normally hiring. Would this be a standard time that somebody that's thinking of being a principal? I think in, internal, it's very different because obviously they know about it, but for external candidates, would we, do you think we'd get candidates externally when we're posting, you know, in October, November, whatever it is?
Yeah. I thi, I think it's a little bit different for, for certain positions. I think it's not the hiring season, so that's something, that's why I'm giving it a full month, to make sure it gets a lot of traction out there. And again, if I'm not seeing candidates coming in, I would be, I would be rethinking this timeline a little bit. This is a huge window that, you know, I've called it, that Mr. Lepret's given us, which I think is great, gives us a lot of time for overlap. And I think, I think people getting the word out, seeing it, you know, the runway that Mr. Lepret's given us, I think people know that this position is coming on, so I'm hopeful that we'll get some strong candidates. We do have a second retirement that is, is somewhat official, that Ms. Molly at the little school. So my hope is also to be able to conduct that in the spring after this one concludes. It'll be a similar process, slightly different makeup, and I'll present that at that time as we get closer to it.
Okay. And then, I mean, my, my one concern would be if we don't get any, if we want it to be an external search, if we, if it's not on a normal time, if we, you know, are not getting a candidate we might have gotten later on. But the, the final thing is just, in terms of the committee members, like, what do you think is, would be like a time commitment for this? And time of day for some of these meetings and things like that, what would the time of day be? What would the overall time commitment be, do you think?
Sure. So the, the, the interviews will likely be in the afternoon, early evenings, in that timeframe. There'll be an initial meeting, and then this timeframe here of early December would be when those meetings would take place. So, we will try to work around the committee's schedule, so I'll try to set up the, the 12-person committee, have an orientation meeting, try to work out those timeframes and get them to folks. I would expect maybe two or three interviews a day over two or three days. So that's what people would block out. So that would be the time commitment.
Anybody else have questions about that?
No, my only-
You asked a lot of good ones.
My only comment, and you answered it already, was that it seems like an aggressive timeline, but I'm, I'm glad to hear you're flexible. If, more flexible in the timeline just to find the right person, I think that's great.
Yeah, say at the end of November, you're seeing that you have not gotten the applications that you're hoping for, would you just, like, bump it out another month or?
Yeah, perhaps, yeah.
Mr. Simon, do you have a question?
Yeah, Patrick, maybe during that, I was curious about community member input. Perhaps either during that finalist, it was just up there a second ago, that, or right after the first of the year, the, uh, conduct interviews or, or site visit times or meetings with the council and the student panels. Do you see an opportunity to get the public ask questions?
Yeah.
See how they respond to public questions?
Exactly.
In your ear?
Yeah, that would be part of the site visits, right? When they're, when they're onsite, we would probably have an opportunity for some questions of the, of the group from them. That would be during that, that window there.
Right. Okay, so, let's see, again, since it's your time, I mean, uh, overall, I guess, I don't think we have to take an official vote on the timeline. I think Dr. Daley can modify this as, as he needs, but overall, I think the only concern would be if we're not getting candidates. But other than that, I'm in favor of it. Anybody else have any different opinions?
No, it looks great. I'm really eager to see how it goes.
I think four weeks is sporty, depending on the number of applicants that you're looking to get. And what is the normal admin hiring season? If you were, like, every, every industry kind of has, like, their own kind of-
Right.
-sweet spot, is?
Yeah, it's, there's certainly a ripple effect as well, so I mean, most of the hiring is in March, April, right? Four positions then, and then whoever gets those positions, then new things open up. So there's a lot going on. It's really year-round for these positions.
Correct.
And, and a lot of the superintendent and higher positions are throughout the year with the overlap. The start dates are almost always July 1. I know mine was really a different timeline with this January start date. That was, that is not the norm. So, and, and then the ripple of that, all the hires we've done here with these mid-year dates. So, I don't think this will be that unusual to get out there and to, and to see what's available, and, and to look and see what experience we have. I, I have not fully asked whether there's other internal candidates who are interested, but I am aware of at least one who is interested, so.
And then, my only other question to the committee, I guess, is, who would be interested in being on the committee?
Is there anybody that wouldn't be?
So, I, I, I will probably not throw my hat into it, just because I, I sort of feel like as the chair of the school committee, I shouldn't be on it. I don't know why, but I just feel like I should leave everybody else. If multiple people are interested, my suggestion would be, rather than us necessarily picking, that you submit your interest to Dr. Daley, just like anybody else, because then he can balance the committee sort of based on other positions as well, like male versus female, elementary students versus middle school students, you know, what your professional careers are and everything else. And so if, if Dr. Daley gets to pick the committee, I would think that we should allow him to pick from us as well. So, so people are interested, I guess, just let Dr. Daley know and he can choose. And if nobody raises their hand, tell me, and we can get somebody, but I will probably-
And we could have an internal discussion as well.
We can, we can, if you want, I mean-
I think that would be nice.
Yeah. But, I mean, do you want to discuss now? I mean, do, do people want to discuss? I mean, who is?
I mean, I think, like you said, Jeff, I, I'm super interested in it, but we can wrestle, I mean, whatever. But I'm sure Tim and Jen, I mean, it's, I think, like, Dr. Daley has said, it's a very important position. It's gonna set the tone for years to come, so it's, it's very important. And that being said, I do have, like, the, I do have so much trust that the final decision is up to Dr. Daley, but I do think it's, it's a, it's a really important role for everybody, whether it's the students, community members, faculty, definitely, to have a strong committee would be, would be really important, because this is a big role.
Yeah. I think just making sure that you'll, you'll be able to make, whoever does it is able to make the meetings, and, yeah, assuming it might also get kicked out a little bit, so, um, okay. Yeah, I, I think just, yeah, I, I agree on the process overall, and I, yeah, I would probably leave it to one of you out of four to do it. I will step aside from that one. Just like, again, just like with the superintendent search, I was not on the actual committee that was vetting it. But, that was a little different because that came to the school committee afterwards, and so I thought it was better not to be part of that.
We need the Michael Connelly of principals.
There we go. Okay.
It's advantageous to be early.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I, to me, the main advantage of it being early is if it's an internal candidate, it's all the other positions afterwards, because we looked at what happened when Mr. Clean stepped up, and then, you know, Mr. Maloney went over, and then Zalavato stepped up, and then, you know, the teacher. So it's like it was four moves from, from one move, so.
I, I will say this. I, I, the person that I would look for has to have some administrative experience already. Not, you know, I, I don't think someone can go from teacher or other kind of role directly into the high school principal. There could be some exceptions to that, but I would say, because people could have that license with outside experience. My bias again is that this person would need to have some school-based leadership experience. And I'm open, but that's, that's sort of in that right now, just to say, when we talk about internal people.
Yeah, and it, I guess the only other concern that I would have, which I will verbalize vaguely, is the fallout of people that don't get it as well. Because there could be people that would be interested, candidates that might be interested in it, that if they don't get it, might look elsewhere, and so there could be further fallout as well. Because that was, that was one concern that we had. I mean, when we hired Dr. Daley, for example, it was very important to us that we had somebody that would work well with the team, because we thought we had a lot of other great, great people on the team already. We wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna lose other people. But there is that risk, if people apply for a position and don't get it, that they might leave. So there could be further openings that are created from this process. And so we just have to be cognizant of that, and, yeah, so I think it would be great if we can do it in this timeframe, and-
I think that's also great, that we have such a lengthy, long runway. There's a lot of time.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So we have our approval on that, and-
Thank you very much.
Move on to the school committee evaluation, which we're finally getting to.
Yeah. Jeff, do you want to take that, or?
Sure. Happy to. Not wanting to read this. Uh, we, wanna show it? Do you have it?
Put it up, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should talk about the process. I still think this is not a great process. I don't know.
I'm fine with that.
I'm just wondering, like, there's just a lot of, I don't know.
What do you think the process should be?
I don't know. Well, I feel like, I feel like when we, when we go through Dr. Daley's, it's like there's four or five specific criteria that we're talking about, and that's what we're evaluating on. Not like, you know, forty, forty different things. We have to rate one through four, and like, I, I, that just seems like the old, we've kind of incorporated the newer one in at the bottom of it. I just wonder if it's time to maybe retire some of the-
You're saying like the top, the top section, where it's more generic, like, do your-
Rate one through four, and then, again, because five of us are rating one through four, like, it's hard to evaluate. And I think all the other evaluations have gone to, like, here are the indicators we're trying to look at, and have we done well on this or not, and that's how we're evaluating other people, but-
My only suggestion on that is, uh, having some level of expository comment is a good thing, and the lower section doesn't currently do that.
Correct.
I also think, again, akin to what we do with the superintendent, it is, even the goals are still divided and, and sort of, sort of subdivided.
Yeah.
Uh, I like that as well. So if we could incorporate those things, I, I like that, which is, which is how our goals are supposed to be divided anyway.
Right.
Right, and we've made our goals rather specific and measurable, and also, there are different folks on different goals, and so I do think, I, I think it's really useful to take the time to go through them.
Oh, I agree.
I think-
I just think, I, I agree with you. I like the way we do it with Dr. Daley. That top section, when going through it, ultimately ends up reflecting on specific goals and specific success criteria, rather than speaking, rather than speaking to as much the section that you're on. You sort of make it fit.
Right. Well, that, that's, what, what I'm, I guess what I would envision is, leadership and governance is a section up top and down below.
Right.
But down below, it's, these are the, these are the three goals we set for ourselves for this year under leadership and governance. I think we could have, like, generally with leadership and governance, how do we do this year? Like, you know, three or four, you know, rankings, and that would be reflective of, okay, we've done these things, and just overall, how, the things that have come up outside of that, because challenges always come up outside of what we've set as our goals. But I just wonder if we can, if we can somehow marry the top and the bottom in a different way, where we, where we just sort of like, we can give some ratings of them, and it would be reflective of the bottom, but I just, right now, it seems like two different evaluations.
It feels like it.
One after the other, and-
Well, we're sort of marrying the two in, in a bizarre way.
Correct, without, with, with keeping everything separate.
Right.
You know, you're married, but you have no joint accounts, and so, everything is just completely separate, you know? I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying that's what it is, though.
All good.
Okay. Sorry for-
No, 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 I, I-
Getting you off, but, just a general-
In working through it, uh, the past few years, I mean, to me, I feel the same sort of thing. It's, we, you go through these different sections, whether it's leadership, leadership, or family and community relations, and then you think, oh, which goals down below relate to that?
Right.
How do I sort of shove those comments in there?
Yeah.
To make it reflective of what we did.
And it, it's also hard to look and say, these are the four main goals we have, or sections. With looking at this value, it's hard to say, we're really strong in this area, but we're not strong in that. Like, it's very hard with so many different line items to say, we really need to do better with community, community engagement, but we're doing pretty well with leadership and governance right now. And so, I think there's so many, so much that it, it sometimes makes it hard, because, yeah, all these things, we, we check the box on these ones, but is that really what, what our strength was this year or not, so?
No, no, fair enough. Okay, uh, I'm not gonna read everything in here. I, you can all thank me later. But a couple of things that are, that stand out, and we'll start with a domain and, and item under evaluation, which is where it says leadership and governance. Under leadership and governance, the, the big one that stands out is obviously we have not done a great job with professional development. I think that's something that has, has been a standout item for the past few years, certainly since I've been on the committee, that we need to work on. I think we have a good plan for that in 24, 25. I think we are committed to, to that plan and to making that happen. But obviously, that is somewhere where we, we fell short. That being said, uh, you know, I think we've done a, a pretty good job overall in leadership and governance, and just some examples of that are, are we've had multiple union contracts that have, that have come to fruition, including the teacher contract this past year. We've worked on security, budget and financial issues obviously have been, has been huge. And I think this team, uh, over the, over the last year, has done, done a good job of leading on these issues, not just sitting back and, and sort of taking it as it happens, but actually trying to be proactive. And I, and I feel that that's going to be even more so in the next year. We've already started talking about budget, we've already started talking about how to approach a potential override. So I, I think we're taking what we've learned in the past and applying it in the future. I think that's, that's a great way to think about it. I'm gonna keep moving down unless someone has any questions. Again, still in leadership and governance, uh, you know, we've, we've done, uh, we've done a good job of, of making sure our goals are evenly distributed. That's, in the past, been, certainly before I've gotten here, but it's, it's evolved since I've gotten here. Goals, as Noel was pointing out, really are much more measurable, much more specific, and I think that's what they should be. And, and they don't have to just be do-your-job-stupid. It's more than that. It goes beyond, hey, have a budget for next year, because that has to happen. So I, I think we've done a good job making sure that's, that's happening, and, and I think we're, we're carrying that forward in the future as well. The other thing I will say is the subcommittees, we, we talk a little bit about it in these meetings, but our work in subcommittees really is very much the heart of what we do on school committee. This isn't to say, oh, wow, we're all wonderful, and there's always some, there's always an opportunity to learn, but I think our participation in things like CPIC, finance, arts, security, like, I mean, it's just, it all goes, oh, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. And with that, I also want to give credit to Dr. Daley and, and his staff, because he does a great job of not just supporting us, but also nudging us along, even though he, you know, it's not his primary job to, to push us along, but he does a great job of moving things forward. But I think we've done a, a very good job of working on these subcommittees and moving along agendas that, that assist with the school. You know, we're gonna be talking about capital improvement projects for the schools in the next couple meetings. That all comes from, from these, and it all gets pushed through these subcommittees. Next section is, is educational programs. We've been talking a lot about that even tonight. But, but overall, I, I think fostering an environment of transparency and an understanding of really data-based, uh, data-based actions is really something that the administration has embraced, but so has the school committee. I think our questions and involvement in, in supporting these goals and supporting data-driven action is something that we've been good at too. And, you know, the, the concerns that we've had, the questions and concerns that we've had really are much more modeled on, on the 2025 and now 2030 goals. I think we've done a good job in supporting those goals. I think we've done a good job of, uh, of seeing that continue to evolve. Um, i- i- again, this is, this is one of those things where the, the section that you have here um, doesn't entirely match up to the, to the goals below, so it's a good example of what, uh, what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Um, financial and asset management, this is, this one's obviously the heart of, uh, of what we do. Um, this is where we have spent the most time i- in terms of our discussions in this committee. Uh, I, I think there's always, there are always lessons to learn. I think, uh, as we went through the, the process last year of, uh, of looking at an override, we talked about it earlier tonight. We're going to keep talking about it in terms of how do we do a better job? I think we did a very good job last year with, uh, the time that we allowed ourselves. I think we, we did a very good job in the interactions with the community, with other boards. And again, that's sort of overlap with other sections. So I, I think we did a good job communicating amongst ourselves along with the other teams in the community, as well as the community itself. I think there are definitely lessons learned about how do we do it better? But, but still, if this is an evaluation of last year, I think we, we did a good job, even though the outcome wasn't as desirable as, as we would have wished.
As, uh, number thirty-one, I'm, I mean, you know, coming on to the committee in May, so missed eleven-twelfths of, of this calendar here. I mean, I, I kind of disagree on number thirty-one. I mean, I think absolutely there is a clear coherent budget and financial plan for one or more years. So coming on and, and, and during the election season, I, I printed it out, that's how good it was, right? I bring it with me. This thing, within two hours, I was able to understand everything I needed to understand about this entire district. Um, it was clear, it was concise, and with one cup of coffee, I understood everything I needed to. So I, I, I think you guys are giving yourselves a little, I know you guys are maybe looking at, okay, the override didn't go as probably one had hoped. But it wasn't because there wasn't a clear concise budget.
The, the way I looked at it, uh, is less about, because we didn't actually create that, was more about did the community understand and was it clear to them? Um, and maybe that's something we can't entirely do something about. Um, you, you, uh, aren't entirely our target audience. You, you are an exceptional audience, uh, when it comes to finance. I think, and, and again, this is subjective. Um, my take on it, certainly in looking at it and, and the way I, I thought about it was, was it received in a clear and concise way? And that was part of our mandate, rather than.
You want to tie this more to the goal that we created?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's fair. It's just, yeah, I think, I think it was.
I think that's a phenomenal document. I mean, all credit to, uh, to Mr. Connolly, all, all credit to Dr. Daley.
Got to put this over on the municipal side and be like, this is what it should look like.
No, no, and, and, and certainly, again, we, our town uses the financial model across the state. Um, but it's then, how do you communicate that out to the world? And I, I've made that point like four times, I don't think I have to say it again.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, we weren't, you know, beating ourselves up over, uh, and I think it was, so that, that's good. And we did add a goal to that effect, so, okay.
Um, you know, the, again, this goes back to, uh, I'll, I'll circle back to, um, we had two teach, two union contracts under negotiation uh, in the last two years, uh, one spilled over into another academic year. Um, and, uh, certainly I think the assistant contract was a bit more of a prolonged process. It did come to, uh, I think, a, a successful conclusion. Um, I think, again, we learned a lot from that, but it was also much, it was a changing landscape in, in the educational community, certainly in Massachusetts. Um, I think we took a lot of what we learned there and what we were seeing or in communities around us, took that to the teacher's contract. And that was certainly from my experience, a highly successful process. But that also speaks to our, uh, our financial and asset management in terms of what could we realistically do? How do we negotiate within the, the construct of a, or the constraints of a budget? And, and make sure we're, we're being as fair as we can be, knowing that, uh, that we're, you know, under financial pressure as a town. So I, I think ultimately those were successful proc- uh, processes. Um, and then the last one here is, uh, family and community relations. This one's again a bit squishy in terms of how do you objectively judge that sort of thing? I, I certainly think there was a lot of school committee participation in, uh, i- within the community, whether it's academic or athletic or, uh, or artistic. I certainly think that there was a, a lot of involvement individually, uh, as well as a, as well as a group. Um, and certainly this goes back again to the financial communications, because again, that, that, it's how we communicated out to, uh, to the community that we were going for an override. You know, I, I think we did a, a good job. I think that, again, that's sort of a squishy area. I think we can always do better. I'm always reluctant to say, oh, yeah, it's always perfect. I just, I just think it's a, it's a moving target and it's something we, we're always going to have to be vigilant in making sure we meet, uh, community standards in t- in terms of giving fair, frequent and honest communications. Um, I should use that one, I like that one. Um, any questions on sort of that top section? Even not reading it, it still took me like eight minutes.
No questions?
Yeah. It's only because it's almost nine to nine.
Two Monday night football games tonight, just saying.
I know. So, yeah, I don't know if we want to go down and, and do these individually. Um, again, I'll just highlight a few, but, um, uh, I'm not going to read each one. The leadership and, and governance, again, is one I want to highlight, that's something we, we, we missed. Uh, but we need to, to hit in the twenty-twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, goals. And, and I think we will, I feel confident that, that we will do certainly better than we have done. Um, I think for the most part, we've, uh, we've met a lot of our goals. Um, I was struck by something that, uh, that Dr. Daley said, um, when Noel, Noel and I met with him. You know, I think one thing that we have as a committee is good internal communication. We talk about these things, uh, talk about goals quite a bit. It's actually easy for any of us that have been on for the last year to take a look at these and have a sense of where they are. Um, so, you know, while Noel and I were looking at these things and, and starting to judge them, we sort of knew where, where they fell. And so when it eventually gets distributed out to, to everybody else, none of it's really a surprise because you sort of know. Um, and, and I think that's a credit to what we should be doing. Um, the only other ones I'll, I'll just point out are, uh, we had a goal here for last year. Uh, the school committee will develop strategies to preserve positions, uh, and supports that were implemented in, uh, in part with ESSER funding. Um, that's obviously sort of the heart of, uh, when you start thinking about the financial issues. It's, we knew this was coming, this has been on there for a while. Um, we have been trying to get ahead of it and I think we're sort of there now. And that's, again, the financial challenge that, that we're facing. Um, the transportation, uh, I think we've done an outstanding job of communicating transportation costs, the challenges, uh, that we face with the increasing costs. We've done a very good job of, of attempting to mitigate where we can. But I think that's really about expectation setting. And I think, um, you know, there is some credit, credit where credit's due. I think even though the outcome, again, is that the rates are higher, uh, we've really tried, I think about half our meetings mentioned transportation rates. As much as I would like to say, oh, yeah, we're, we're going to bring the rates down, I think we've all been realistic in knowing that they were going to go up and trying to communicate why they would go up. And again, just being fair and honest with, uh, with, uh, with what's, with the reality of, of transportation costs. Um, the, the other one to point out, again, was, uh, activity fees. That's, again, something we spent a tremendous amount of time on. Um, again, knowing that, that fees were going to go up, we tried to look holistically across fees, whether it was, uh, the arts uh, and or participation in athletics or clubs or anything else. That's really been something we've been looking at for a number of years. Again, it went on last year. And I, I think, again, we did a good job of, uh, of trying to mitigate as much as we could, but also just being transparent with, uh, with what the actual costs were going to be and why. Um, and then the, the last one that I'll, I'll point out would be the, uh, uh, funding for, uh, funding for, for, uh, kindergarten. And that's something that's been on our plan for a while. We've been trying to, uh, to slowly reduce the, the participa- the family participation in funding. We didn't get quite as far as we wanted, but I, again, I think that goes back to, uh, to the financial situation the town's in and, and really does circle back to, uh, to the, the override discussions that we've had. So that's kind of the ten cent tour or four minute tour. I only used the word again like fourteen times in talking, so that wasn't so bad. Um, any questions, comments?
Thank you guys for putting it together. Um, my, my general comment just overall for the next year is perhaps see what other towns do for models or whatever, just to see if there's some way to marry them better.
Yeah.
But appreciate you guys doing this. My general comment is I really enjoy the committee we have here, um, and last year's committee, Diana and Rich, you know, were in there as well. I feel like we complement each other in terms of, you know, we come, we have different backgrounds, different jobs, different age children and everything. We have different interests on the committee, so we're not like, five of us aren't trying to do one thing and then nobody wants to do the other stuff. And I really enjoy that. I think we, we always speak with each other with a level of respect and, you know, we don't have to agree on everything, but we, you know, we can talk it out and, and we can agree to disagree when we need to and, you know, really enjoy, enjoy, you know, working with all of you. And there's been times that, you know, there's been people that maybe in the past haven't pulled their weight. I feel like we have a group that everybody, again, just like we were talking about last time, everybody wants to be on the, the committee for the principals. Like, I think, I think the biggest challenge here is everybody wants to be involved. And so, um, you know, very much appreciate that. I always thought, when I ran for school committee years ago, I was getting on a committee that was very, very experienced. And I said my main goal was to be the bridge to the next group and they should accomplish, so there we go. But, um, we're, uh, yeah, so I, I appreciate working with you guys and all the work that everybody puts in. And I know that everybody, you know, if we need anything, we could just, could reach out to any of you and you'd all jump in and so appreciate that. Okay.
Should we hug?
Yes.
No.
For a little hug. Okay, Dr. Daley?
Just, I just want to share, you know, this is a, a highly functional group. You did a great job. That's the nicest thing I've heard all day. But I, I'm just framing it that way, it's, that's not always the case, right? And, and I will just point out, what's nice about the MASCE framework is it does lay out what a school committee should be doing, what they shouldn't be doing. And you only had one thing in the two area, which, which I would agree that, you know, everything else is going very well. But it's, it's nice to have a tool that can help communicate when things are going different ways with different people. Um, we can certainly talk about alignment, I, I have some ideas and thoughts on that as well. I think we've talked about the timing and the process and all those pieces, but, um, but yeah, it, it's, you know, it's a great committee to work with and for, and people get along and we're very productive and we're rolling in the same direction, so.
I mean, it, 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 just on the tool again, like, for, for people that weren't here before, the top used to be the only evaluation. That was what it was. And then we decided to do more like goals at the bottom. And then we were like, well, we're not capturing the goals. And so our brilliant idea was just, let's just put them together and do all of it, you know? And, but we never cut anything. And so it was just, now it's just two things together as opposed to one cohesive.
Jeff, I think that would be something interesting to spend some time on, like, seeing if we can.
Yeah.
Or even the frequency, you know, like maybe the top part you don't do every year.
Hmm. Yeah.
Or, I don't know, or you, you just condense them down a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, just like an overall, like, here's, here's our indicator, here's a thing, specific thing for this year, but overall, how do we do in this area? Like this, you know, I don't know. Just seems like we, I think we just kind of put it together years ago and we never really worked through how to make them work together. Okay, um, next one on our agenda here is, so do we have to vote to approve that, uh, to accept it or not? No?
Evaluation?
Your own.
I don't think so. Okay, town meeting warrant article discussion. So, excuse me, um, we have October town meeting coming up. Typically, we have not voted, uh, on recommendations for really anything at October town meeting. Um, in the finance planning team meeting, one of the select board members, Mr. O'Leary, did ask us if we were going to be making a recommendation on the, uh, specifically on the general bylaws related to the MBTA. And so I don't think this should be a me decision. I think it should be an us decision as to whether we're heard on this or not. I think overall, my concern would be, we, we generally stick to just the things that really directly relate to the school and, and budget. Um, so like last year, I guess the one thing that you could argue maybe got a little bit out of that was the senior tax credit. But I don't think it was because that directly impacts the amount of money that was available for the budget. Um, and so I think that was a very direct relationship to the budget. Um, so I, I don't know that there's anything on here. Even, even things like amending the capital budget, like, we haven't even made recommendations on that. Usually if it didn't, if it wasn't a school item that was being amended, so usually we, you know, in June town meeting, we re- vote to recommend the general budget and the capital projects because school is directly related to there. I don't, you could argue that any of these things reduce free cash or reduce the amount of, you know, resources we have, which indirectly impacts the schools. But realistically, then that means we would be voting on every warrant article and may, or making recommendations on every warrant article. And so I think there's nothing, I think everything's a little bit attenuated or a little bit, you know, a couple of steps away from being direct to us. So I just want to open up to the committee to see if you guys feel that we should recommend anything. I will call out Article seventeen for electronic voting devices. I really hope passes, but I still don't know that we need to make a recommendation on that. But Noel?
Um, I, I don't see anything on this that we should, that we should vote on. I think we need to, you know, it's about staying in our lane, honestly.
Yeah.
Can I ask, why, why did they ask if we were going to make a recommendation on MBTA's?
I, I, I.
I mean, in terms of, in terms of it being related to school committee.
I don't think, I don't think it was because.
Okay, that's, that's what, I was wondering if I was missing something.
It's the only one that is going to be, have any discussion related to, honestly.
Again, I, I don't, I don't believe anybody is going to change their vote because the school committee votes to recommend any of these or doesn't. Um, I, I actually think we need to very much think about the students in the district and how best we can advocate for funding for our, our students. And I think staying, you know, united in what we work on and not having divisions within amongst us and not, I, 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 I just, I really think we should be focusing on the budgetary issues that we're dealing with and not, you know, build up bad blood for things that are not even related to what we're doing. And so I, I.
And also that we might not fully understand.
Right, I mean, we haven't gone, that's a goo- excellent point too. And, and at town meeting, I'm sure we will all raise our hand and vote one way or another on different issues. But other than that, I mean, this was a big thing with the sewer project where a lot of people kept, you know, people were saying, are you going to make a, take a vote on that? And I don't know, we, it never got to a point of being voted on at town meeting, so we didn't really have to get to that point. But a- a- again, like, that was another one. It's, it's hard, it's hard to figure out where it should be. I actually don't think any of these things are really close to what we should be voting on or we're voting to recommend. Um, so I, I don't feel bad saying no. And, and I will also say I had a other conversation with a different support member who said, why on earth would you want to do that? And so, um, yeah.
I, a- as much as I have personal opinions on a number of these, um, you know, there's a difference between that and having, uh, having an opinion that is formed from and by the school committee. Uh, so to me, I, I echo your thoughts on this, yours and Noel's. Um, I just think it's out of our lane.
Agreed.
Okay, Dr. Daley?
Couple of things, um, I believe the reason why it was asked whether it would be discussed, obviously if there's a new development going in, it'd be an impact to students coming to schools, police fire, all those costs. But the, the particular. But the, the particular pieces that are being discussed, I don't know that it extends all the way out.
I think you're being generous as to the reason why we were being asked.
Yes. That was articulated. That was articulated. Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Connolly though, is also suggesting there, there is that amended operating budget line. So is that a place that we want to take?
But is that, is the operating budget just for, is, is it change? Do we know what the change is for? Is it anything?
Is it anything related to us?
Well, it's. Yeah, it's, it's got the like million, million and a half.
There's a ripple effect of some of those decisions that.
But it's still not defined that it's actually coming to us. It's just a matter of whether that goes to free cash and whether or not.
Well, operating budget and capital could both theoretically, like, we don't have enough, the knowledge right now. Like there, one thing that was discussed at finance planning team is one of the buildings in Martin's Landing came online earlier than expected. So there will be more revenue from that, but there hasn't been a decision made yet as to what to do with that revenue and where it goes. So if that ends up changing our budget, I think we would have to make a recommendation on that. But if it, if, for example, it goes to a stabilization fund or somewhere else, then I don't think we would have to necessarily make a recommendation on that. So I just think right now we don't have the information on that, but there's going to be more discussion. So it might be the, it might be on the floor of town meeting that we make a recommendation based on what happens. But normally the operation, operating budget, this is the, a standing one in October that usually just pays some prior year bills or does some small, there's, there's some small adjustment sometimes that usually don't relate to the school. There is a concern, there is a concern this year about special education, which I think you're going to talk about very soon, which might actually mean that we need a, a change to our budget. And so I agree that if it, if it directly relates our, to our budget, I think we will make a rec, a vote to recommend.
So those specific lines, as you said, will be shared at town meeting. So you might take a vote.
Correct. Correct. But just generally talking about like, and the reason, it used to be everything was voted at town meeting, but during COVID, because some people weren't always there and it was virtual, a lot of boards started making, taking recommendations beforehand. Um, we can still take a, we will be in meeting at town meeting, so we can take a vote to recommend at town meeting if we need to. But I, I just, I just wanted to make sure I got the input from everybody here. Cause when we're in finance planning team and we're talking about town meeting, it was asked to me, are you, are we, is the school committee going to make a recommendation on Articles, you know, thirteen through sixteen? And I, I just wanted at least give an opportunity to the committee to see if anybody felt strongly.
I think it's really important as a committee that we're staying, I mean, Noel said, we've got to stay in our lane. Primarily because I think for a lot of these, we may all have differing opinions that have nothing to do with school committee. We're going, we're going to town meeting too. And I think a lot of people forget that, right? So when, the problem is if we take a position, a school committee, that can, that can comp, that can complicate matters if it comes to an individual or hand count vote. And I think it's good for the town to see, hey, maybe the school committee is three to two on this. Well, why? It's got nothing to do with the school. And we have, we all live in the town too. So I think that's, we really got to be really careful about staying in, in what, what our school committee issues and what aren't. And we shouldn't be extending beyond that.
Okay. So we will not make any recommendations right now. But again, we will be in session for town meeting. Does everybody, can everybody make town meeting?
I will say we have C I P C tomorrow, so if, if we're going to amend a capital project, I'll let you know. We'll go for more.
Yeah. Okay. So routine matters. We have one minutes to vote on.
Uh, move to approve the, um, minutes from the August twenty sixth, um, twenty twenty four open session as written.
So moved.
Second, second. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Uh, budget update. Mr. Connolly?
Yes. So, um, the September budget report for fiscal year twenty twenty five was in your package this evening. This is the first, and this is the first F Y twenty five September, um, budget update we're, we're giving. Reflex activity pretty much through the middle of September. Um, so if, if these are certainly, uh, with exception of some special education costs that have risen, I'm going to kind of get, get into, uh, most other expenses in terms of, um, instructional materials, technology, um, operational expenses with, um, utilities and maintenance areas are all kind of started out, um, on the, in trending within budget. Um, we're certainly, um, off and running with the first payrolls of the year for teachers and professionals. And all payrollly, um, areas are projected at the moment just remain within, within budget. We're certainly going to, as we always do, need to monitor the, the, the vacancies. We are seeing kind of more of those and some additional extended leaves that will, will track the potential impact of those as we normally do throughout the year and how that may impact the, the long-term substantial budgets and as well as the salary line items. But, um, most areas, um, are, are looking to be in budget. We're still in the process of encumbering and alerting supplies and adjusting the balance balances. As you can see, some of those balances, um, reflected in the report through about the middle, middle of September. So some of the areas that are kind of more of a, a, a concern financially, some of this was talked about in the finance planning team, um, is that we are seeing a rise in cost of special education costs, out of district costs, uh, particularly in the areas of the larger district tuitions and transportation. Um, so we did have some, some additional, um, costs that sort of arose sort of late, late in the fiscal year. So after the, the, the budget approval process, I'm talking sort of late May into June, um, some additional students that, uh, there isn't to have a need to be, um, placed out of district. Like in some cases, those are students that would be staying kind of late, late in the year last year. Um, but we did budget for forty students to be in our district placements. And right now, at this point in the year, um, we're looking at forty-five students being educated outside the district. So that's an increase, net increase of, um, uh, of five students. So the, we did make some steps as we normally do at the end of the fiscal year to prepay special education tuitions. And that's a process we've been doing for a number of years and it's worked out well. And that has typically provided additional labor flexibility for us to deal with sort of the unforeseen or the unexpected in this area because it can change quickly. Um, so we did take those steps last year. I will say, as you can see on the report, just about all those additional expenses at this point in the year has, has been used, has been encumbered. So when you look at our tuition amount that's encumbered and all committed on the report as well as for, for special ed transportation and tuition that, that is reflected. So that, that, I would just say that is unusual. That, that amount in September, right before the end of the first quarter has had to be, has had to be used. Um, and that is a large amount of some of these, a rise in cost that occurred kind of late, late in the budget process. Sort of after the budget was adopted, certainly by the committee and then at town meeting in June. Um, and the other piece of this is that there's potential of more costs on, on the horizon. Of students that, um, may be additionally outplaced and they know of, of two, potentially one student may change replacement. That all could lead to additional, additional costs. So, um, the other thing that we are kind of also tracked is, this is also could lead to additional transportation costs as well. And one thing that did occur after the budget was adopted last year is the, uh, the rate did increase more than we projected from.
Twenty-five.
Two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student, per bus to three, to over three hundred dollars.
It was a huge increase.
So it was a huge, it was a huge increase.
For just special ed busing?
For just special ed. Yeah. About thirty-five percent increase. Uh, that was, that contract, as you know, was negotiated with C and collateral, a lot consortium. So, so it's a little, not, not the best of news financially that this early in the fiscal year. Um, so we're, we're still working with the student services office to, um, get updates on this, this potential cost. But this was part of what was discussed at the finance planning team last week. Um, and just some of the, the options of where we're at because everyone knows this is sort of a, this can happen. Um, and we've been able to kind of address some of these unforeseen. It does happen to an extent every year because we have prepaid tuitions. But that, it's a little unusual that we're in, that we're in September and, you know, the three hundred thousand dollars that we prepaid is had to be used for some of those additional costs already.
So, couple of very specific questions. So, and the only, the only correction I would have is not unusual, it's concerning all this. But the three hundred thousand, does that fully cover the additional out of district placements and the special education and the, um, transportation? And then there's still, I know there's still more potential things, but does the three hundred thousand at least cover what we know already to be, to be new?
It, so the transportation, we're still trying to track that, but it definitely covers the, the tuitions.
Okay. It covers the tuitions, but might not even, we might already be short and. And that doesn't, that doesn't take into account other ones that still might be needed. And it doesn't take into account, obviously, the goal is to have a prepayment for next year. And so we'd have nothing left over if we spent it all this year. So. So if you could, if you could get some numbers related to all these specifics, you know, so that we can share with the finance planning team, ideally before we meet again, so that everybody can see it in advance of that.
Best of it numbers, but I'm still working on the transportation piece of it is the most kind of.
Yeah.
It's almost, what's difficult about the transportation is we almost have to get the first invoice.
To see.
To better project it because what we, what is kind of unknown is what is the shared cost of it.
Yeah.
Because we are sharing for every student that's on the bus, we share it with Melrose, Wakefield, Lynch, and Wilmington, Redding. So, and we don't quite always know that until we, we get the first invoice and we look at it. So that will help that we'll get that at the end of the month, obviously.
Yeah, just because, I, there's, there's a lot of shifting parts, as you guys, as you know, from finance planning, but for everybody else, there's a lot of shifting parts of things that might be funded in different ways. And there might be free cash for this or that, and there might be revenue from, you know, building coming online. And so it'd be really useful to understand what it is and be able to give specific numbers. Because the goal would be that that, that cushion remains as a cushion that can be used throughout the whole year. And so even if somebody were to say, oh, well, you have the cushion, but, you know, needs change throughout the entire year. And so we should have that cushion in place for other, other move-ins, other, other placements, you know, out of district placements, other challenges later on. So. Okay. So if you could get that and send that to, send that to us, so we can talk about that at the next meeting. I think that'll be really useful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions or thoughts?
What's driving the out of district placement? I know we had forty, which was already high. I'm trying to pull up my, see, I'm referring back to the binder of greatness over here, Jeff. But, uh, right, like in the mid thirties, right, for last decade? Is there, is there a?
We got down to like twenty-eight, twenty-six.
Theme or, uh, I mean.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say overall the mental health, you know, concerns is the number one theme. Again, reasons why needing those school adjustment counselors, having one at every school. Even with that in place, we're seeing these increased needs. Yeah, I have asked. No, I think much, some of the additional costs is just students needing additional support, one-on-one support in that out of district placement. Um, which results in additional costs, um, back to the district. Um, it was just additional staff that I think that, that need to be allocated. I think all related to just additional needs. I did talk to, met, and met with Cindy Conant, obviously director of student services. I mean, she's saying this is not what I'm, I'm alone. This is sort of a trend that's happening out there. So there were a lot of sort of students who sort of extended evaluations at the end of, at, you know, last quarter of the year, last year, last sixty days of the school year that have ended up to be recommended in our, in our programs. So there's a lot of, I can say there's a lot of moving pieces and a lot that goes in, that kind of goes into that.
When we, when we get more information, it might be worthwhile to ask Mrs. Conant to come to a meeting, just so we can have more information there. And this could be something that when we bring in Representative Jones and Senator Tara, that we can address as well.
Now, one of the, I mean, we'll obviously be looking at this as it goes on, but it, what it means, I think we're going to be certainly a candidate as we look at these increased costs for extra ordinary relief and that program.
But did that come in for this year or for the next year though?
It would come in for this year.
It would come in for this year. Okay.
Okay.
And that's if it's more than, is it twenty-five percent?
More than twenty-five percent.
Of, of what you had anticipated, so.
So I did, and I have asked Cindy Conant to prepare something for us to show us, sort of Mr. Sullivan's question about, you know, what programs do we have? You know, is there a way to increase programming? It's, it's certainly something we're always looking at, but, um, these individual students have needs that can't be met within the district.
Yeah, I think it's good to understand because it may not be just increased program. I think there could be a misconception that you could change programming. And if that doesn't change the number of students that are outplaced, then we're spending additional money on programs that don't move the needle. So I think concerning is a, is a, I mean, more than mildly concerning as we go into another year. You know, I think what special ed was twenty-seven percent of the budget last year. So you're telling me it's going to be probably closer to thirty percent this year? That's a trend that is not sustainable. We're back in the unsustainable trends and what, what options? And, you know, candidly, how can we get out in front of it much earlier this year to, to try to at least paint the picture of what this looks like and, and where it is? And your point, Dr. Daly, about adjustment counselors is well taken in saying, if we consider eliminating these positions, are we now paying for an additional out of district placements moving forward? Which is, just creates this death spiral that we're, that we could be faced with.
We talked about that a lot at some of our forums last year about the, you know, if you eliminate things, you end up paying it more down the road.
So how can we quantify, so maybe going back to, you know, um, how can we start to quantify that early in the school year? Cause I think that's an important metric. And I think we do have numbers behind it that we can quantify how, what that means. And, and using other towns as a comparison would be a good thing to do too.
What's tricky, you do that, but then you still have kids who are outside the box. And then it's like, well, wait a minute, you said this wouldn't prevent, right? So it's, it's hard to do it, but I think we can definitely.
I think we have to go in acknowledging, no matter what we do, there's always going to be out of district replacement. But what can, what is the, here, you know, if there's three options, what is the overall way that we can best manage our budget? And, and I think that's the part that, you know, I think that you're right, we have to take that as baseline. There's going to be X number of kids, no matter what we do, right? Golden sidewalks, you could throw millions and millions of dollars at it. There's just going to be some kids that we can't, unless we bring the instruction here, which isn't going to happen. So how can we start to kind of paint those pictures of the different options that we have as a, as a school department? So the public really understands our choices.
Well, and I think also to help understand that, and maybe this could be part of the presentation without giving away any privacy concerns or things like that. What are some of the needs that aren't being met here? That, why do, why do specific students have to go to district? And then connecting it to would they be met if we did have the full-time social adjustment counselors at each school and things like that? Because I think it's hard for people to under, understand the, the needs, to get a little bit more specific to explain it to us.
Yeah, we talked about this at our goals workshop. I was, you know, I was curious about that, um, question. And like you said, there's these, I, I, like you, like Timmy just said, there's kids that are never going to be able to be captured there. And that's just, that's a baseline. But with these cuts and losing school adjustment counselors or not having, being able to have, you know, as, as much time as, as they're needed, um, that's going to have, that's going to have real repercussions. And I think that's really, would be great to have that as like real information that we could use to discuss.
Yeah. And, and the, the, the bottom line here, I think, is we have to be on top of this early. Because there, there are other avenues to relieve some of the pressure. The finance committee has money each year that they can use for, you know, unexpected costs. We've also, for the last few town meetings, we've put in money into, uh, an account, which is specifically for something that happens that's unexpected in the middle of the year. So even if that was.
For this cost.
Correct. Exactly. For this. So if you had to.
Just for transportation, right? Is tuition as well? Oh, okay.
We haven't tapped it.
We haven't tapped it. So the point is, yeah, if we need to, and then if we were to get some relief from the extraordinary, like it could be put back in. But just, my concern is I don't want, I don't want to impact the rest of the district because something goes up in this area and now we're, now we're cutting other positions that impact other students as well. And so I think we have to be very careful and make sure that before we do that, because there's a tendency to say, well, let's just not spend anything in these other areas that also might be important, that could lead to further problems down the, down, down the road. So if there are needs right away, there are some relief valves that are available that we could potentially tap into if we need to. So let's just get the information when we have it and appreciate the, the heads up early on in the year. So thank you, Michael.
We're similarly collecting data on the leaves of absence and Michael referenced as well. I do think part of what we negotiated, uh, through the contract to have some sort of a wellness committee with a cap that's sort of limiting it. Uh, we're already seeing increases as we've been seeing a trend for several years, but that cap has come into place. It's, it's been serving its purpose and it's been effective thus far. But there's just an increase in the amount of leaves that are coming in. And those are the leaves and the, and the out of districts are the two places that I've really been watching. But I've seen other districts that have had financial issues that if they come up, you know, you. I've really been watching, but I've seen other districts that have had financial issues that if they come up, you know, you can't budget for either of those two pieces. You, you can talk about it, you can forecast, but you can't definitively budget for it, and so that's what we're keeping a very close eye to, so. Michael, I appreciate the update, I think having those updates regulate here, make sure that the committee knows and that the community knows well ahead of these things as they arise.
It'll, it'll be good to see by the end of the year how, uh, how what we negotiated has a financial impact on, uh, on the leaves that are requested. It'll, it'll be interesting to see, to judge it.
Yeah, we have, we have to be able to talk about these things and, you know, it, it is what it is, no, no one did anything wrong here, we're just, we just have to make sure we call it out and
Yep.
So people are aware before we get to a, a bad place. So, moving on staffing, uh, Dr. Daly?
Sure, I just had a, a brief update and so I'll just reiterate what I had said earlier is that, uh, these are not new hires in, in terms of new positions, these are, um, either temporary appointments, annual appointments that are made, or these are, uh, changes to positions, um, I'm going to go a little bigger. But Ms. Amy Fleming, uh, has replaced, uh, someone to become a teacher of reading. She was in our district as an interventionist, one of those positions that we cut, so we're able to actually bring in, uh, a position, which is wonderful to be able to say that. Shannon Kelly is a kindergarten teacher, she was already within the district and moved into a different role. Ms. A- Andrea Paguca is a building substitute, so that was a replacement for an existing role. Uh, our Title One Tutor, Literacy Tutor, Lana Gould has been hired, that is a grant-funded position. And, and again, a position that we have had in the past. And Karen Pearl is a building substitute at the middle school. And Louisa Simpson as a food services permanent substitute. Uh, we also appointed, uh, Mr. Hudson as the coach for the unified sports team and that video that we saw earlier tonight, excellent video. I will be sharing that out, I'm glad we get to share it here, but the high school community has seen it, but I want to make sure the whole district sees, it's really what we represent here, um, with inclusion, it's wonderful, so.
Thank you very much, bids and donations?
Sure. The school, uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents from, from the E Ethel Little PTO to help fund one bus for a kindergarten field trip and one bus for a grade five enrichment trip at the little school.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars from Pierce Burnham to be put toward the Eagle Project for pre-K playground equipment at the Hood School.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? That's it? Uh, no grants? No overnight trip requests?
No, at this time.
So, subcommittee updates, finance planning team met? Mr. Friedman?
A lot of discussion and we alluded to it earlier about, uh, um, how to use some cash that, uh, that the town has that was, uh, over and above what was originally planned and there are a number of methodologies to, uh, to think about that that may or may not impact the schools, um, I think that's still a little bit TBD.
Well, and just to clarify for anybody watching that thinks like we just found cash in the cushion.
No.
The revenue was from a building from Martin's Landing coming on and being at capacity quicker than expected. But the bigger issue that's going on is, in a very positive, there's been a couple of positive notes. Number one, the, when they were thinking about doing a sewer down Main Street, there was a grant that was obtained for about one and a half million dollars that even though they're voted, they voted not to move forward with that sewer project, it looks like they're going to be able to use that grant towards the sewer, the septic, um, project at, at town center. So that would free up cash that was allocated for that for something else.
Domino effect.
Yeah, and then some of the, and some of the projects that they were going to use ARPA funds for, one of the projects has actually come in under budget and so there's a lot of moving things around because we can use a grant for something else and some of the, um, bids actually came in lower than expected.
Yeah, to, to be clear, it doesn't match up with our shortfalls and there are limitations on how this can be used.
Correct.
So, you know, this, this is a topic of discussion, but, you know, before we all.
Right. And there's discussions on like the bridges, about like which,
Right.
Like, okay, one of the bridges is actually in slightly better shape than they thought, so maybe they don't have to do, uh, an interim repair before a bigger repair and so there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, now again, they said that with Alchester Street too, and then it suddenly was in a state where it had to be closed down, so. It was not a very exciting finance planning team meeting.
Yeah, it was, and that, yeah, that, that was the bulk of the discussion for extended period of time.
Right. And then, we never got to the things we really want to get to, but, um.
We came closer.
Yeah. We, we moved it up on the agenda and still didn't get to it, so, um.
We moved off of the first bullet point, which is an accomplishment. See, look for the pasta.
Yes, um, Substance Abuse Coalition? Mrs. Leenders?
Yeah, so I think there are two big dates coming up. There's, um, and I talked about this the last time too, there's the Youth Mental Health First Aid run by the Community Action Team and that's October first and October eighth. It's five to nine, it is online and you do need to do both dates, but there are only two people signed up right now and they need to have five to do it. So, anyone watching at home, or we know anyone who wants to attend, it's really important, and then there's an adult one, same thing, November twelfth and fourteenth, also from five tonight, and you do have to attend both sessions. So if any school committee members here want to sign up for anything, I know it's a, it's a time commitment, um, it's, it's primarily for the first one, people working with youth and the second one, people working with adults to recognize warning signs and, and other things with substance abuse disorder. Um, the other big thing I think was the nicotine-free generation, they talked about this last time where they had gone before the Board of Health, but now they're going to ask to formally have it put in the bylaws for the Board of Health and that's why other cities and towns have gone about it. And I know we've talked about this, but the way they were presenting it today, it, it, that it's, you know, it is a matter of public health, it's not restricting anyone's rights, it is a, is a public health matter, and when we started talking about this, we were ahead of the curve, now we're kind of more somewhere in the middle of towns surrounding us, so we want to make sure to to still stay on the front end of this, so I think, I'm not, do you know what she's presenting with the Board of Health? Not exactly sure.
I can check.
Okay, um, but we will get an update on that when she does.
I'll just add, I like the metaphor they used about, you know, there's a, there's a lot of kids that don't remember what the smoking section was in, in a, in a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
And that's sort of that same idea, that it's just, you're not really taking away a right if it's not something you've ever known. And I think everyone would agree, we don't want kids smoking or growing smoking, so.
We had a smoking courtyard in my high school.
In your high school? How old, I mean, nevermind.
You totally don't want to be.
Fine Arts Subcommittee's not on here by the way, we had a meeting too. But that one, but, uh, Evaluation Subcommittee?
Um, I think Jeff covered that.
Yeah.
Good.
Check.
Policy Subcommittee?
Uh, Paul, Paul goes, it's Jen just did the last one there. Um, we met last week, um, reviewed Policy A, um, and then the plan here is I think we'll go through all the policies, so we're not jumping around and doing readings and then changing things in other policy areas as we go and look to consolidate. Um, really nothing substantive in Policy A, um, I think we're, you know, the Subcommittee's leaning towards getting to the Chair, Vice Chair nomenclature, like we still, uh, show Chairman, Vice Chairman, outside of that, um, nothing major, but we'll go through and then bring them all for readings and fun times will be had by all.
But we can't wait.
Fun.
I could do fine arts.
Fine Arts Subcommittee? Now, while we want to update us?
Um, yep, that was September eighteenth, um, we had a great discussion, um, talking about the new, um, school committee goal and beyond school committee goal, but for community engagement, um, and I reached out to everyone present to come up with some great ideas for ways that we can bring the arts to the community, um, and the community to the arts that we're doing, um, because I think that's an important piece of that on community engagement, letting folks in the community know what's going on in the schools, the value of arts education. Um, some great ideas came up, my, one of my favorites was talking about doing performances in some other places such as, um, maybe having like a notorious or one of the other groups perform at Martin's Landing, um, and just also just trying to bring, um, the seniors together, um, in the schools in creative ways. Um, so we, we did come up with some, some neat ideas there and they're going to continue to think about them and I also think that the teachers that were there are going to bring this to their kids, um, like Mrs. Kane will bring it to her students and.
Yeah, you, you had some great ideas there, I mean, like I think you were the one that brought up like, hope, like when we do an art show, maybe putting an art show in Martin's Landing or in the senior center or different areas where they can see it and somebody had said, um, and Mrs. Lister said they used to do a dinner before one of the shows for, you know, invite the seniors to go to a show and then have dinner beforehand and so maybe some of those things that we talked about, you know, like, some of the shows, like the middle school performances don't usually sell out, but maybe like, you know, going to senior center and saying, if you want to see the show, get your name on the list and you'll have a ticket waiting for you at Will Call, so that you can come in and go to the shows and so, yeah, but a lot, a lot of, a lot of the discussion was about how to, how to interact better, so.
Yeah, I love that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will continue to be a discussion, um, let's see, we went over the calendar, um, obviously the, the arts calendar is very full. So it's, it's on the district site if anyone's interested. There's always something going on with, um, whether it be masters or music or, um, fine arts, things like that, um, let's see. Um, Dr. Daly, you may want to speak a bit to the idea of the interest in there being some additional, um, postings for positions and what that means vis-à-vis budget and things like that.
Yeah, there's a new, you know, through the contract, we negotiated a process for introducing new clubs or additional positions depending on enrollment. Very similar to how we roll this out with our clubs and activities, um, but also looking athletics, so that's part of an ongoing joint labor management group. This is certainly where, we're aware of the optics, if you're adding a, a new position, what that looks like. So we talked about how this year, it certainly has to be that balance between, um, what's, what's coming from the student user fees and what's coming from the budget. It obviously has to be a lot more coming from the, the fees that are generated and one, one thing that's tricky when it's not the same students, I mean, sorry, when it is the same students, that's not new funding coming in, right? So if, if I'm already in the club and then Michael joins, we now have his user fee to pay towards the, the cost for running the, the event. Um, but if, if it's me and the way the system is set up, that I don't pay the full fee now because I'm doing it a second time, we then don't have those funds available, so. We have to really look at that structure and that piece to see about what we can offer, but they, um, there's a lot of student interest in having a second, uh, a cappella group, there's a lot of interest in having, um, choreographers for the musical at the middle school and doing some adjustments to some of those other stipends, so that work was really started as a part of the negotiations process and we're trying to see some of those things through, but we're not going to be able to see everything through, um, in year one. Just not budgetarily or financially possible, so.
And then also, while you're at it, do you want to speak to the ACV grant update?
Sure, so the, um, the work that's being done with the grant, uh, is certainly continuing. Uh, we were able to receive the grant in the last two years, if something comes available, there is funding or support available, we will apply for that again. Um, we are sort of an exemplar in the state, there's, I think there's two districts that they're using. Uh, there's promotional materials that are coming out from the department to really to seek additional funding for this work across the state. It's a great framework, I, I was actually interviewed on video, so hopefully that doesn't get out there too much, but, uh, I've said several times, the arts are leading the way here, I would love a framework like this in other content areas. Where, where it's a tool, it's a mechanism for teachers, parents, students to review the curriculum, talk about what's working and talk about, uh, what we can do to improve, so it really worked well for us aligned with our equity work to say, you know, if students want to participate in this program, do we offer it? Do we offer it during the school day, do we offer it only after school, something like dance, for example, when is that offered? Is it available to all students or only to students who are in X, Y, Z, you know, they're not doing another sport or something, so. We've really engaged representative, uh, group of our, of our staff, K to twelve, and we've involved all of our staff, K to twelve, in pieces of this, so we're excited about that, we're continuing and hopefully there will be some funding available. Quite honestly, we use some of the funding, a lot of it, for stipends for the people, for all this additional work. They believe in the work, but it's, it's additional work and so I, I hope there is funding to support some stipends for those teachers to do this important work.
Okay, great, um, another update was on the procedium that has been an issue for, it seems like forever. Um, and it looks like there's maybe a company that's going to be able to assist in rewiring instead of replacing, but they are, any update on that in the last few days?
Not, not, yeah, we're, it's sort of a Plan C D E here after the main plan, but they think there's a possible rewiring of the existing screen, um, and so we're hopeful that that'll come up and we're not mounting the speakers in the, in the auditorium yet, until that work is completed, so there's a bit of a ripple effect here on that as well. Not that it would necessarily impact them, but if we have to get in there and then put them up, take them down, we're going to try to do it all at once, but we have some fantastic equipment that we do want to get up there and install, so.
Great, anything to add?
I think that I would add, when we're thinking about budget, I, I will say they, they pointed out, not so subtly, that, which is a good thing, that, um, a lot of the teachers that do a lot of fine arts after school are teachers during the school too, so when we're thinking about, you know, cutting positions and things like that, you know, we have to be careful about that because, you know, if you cut the teacher that runs the program, you don't have the programs after school as well, so it is something to think about when we're thinking about budgets. They did point out a lot of fine arts are fully funded by, by donations other than the stipends that are, that are done, so there's a lot of fundraising that is done in advance for, for those things. And I would just add, the middle school is doing Percy Jackson this year, so.
Yes, a lot of excited kids.
So, yes, we should have, hopefully a lot of committee members, people that are going out for this, so.
Yeah.
Yes, and then, was there any, are, there was no Athletics Subcommittee yet, right?
No, and I apologize, but the, the Fine Arts kind of was scheduled for October, we moved it up.
Yeah.
When is the Athletics Subcommittee?
Is that tomorrow?
That's tomorrow, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday, I'd like.
Okay. So Subcommittee Update, Athletics Subcommittee is meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth at some time. The Finance Planning Team, Finance, Finance Planning Team is meeting October fourth at eight AM. Substance, Substance Abuse Coalition is meeting on October twenty-eighth at ten AM. Fine Arts is meeting at some point and I can't remember when. One, one random kind of, kind of an update, but just on our goals, I ran into Brad Jones at the, um, Apple Festival and told him that we wanted him to come sometime, he said he lives a quarter mile from here, so whenever we want, we want him, so.
Great.
We can coordinate that at some point. Administrative report, there isn't a, there is a report and I appreciate you telling me that you added it because I wouldn't have seen it otherwise.
Well, a couple of things came up to make sure in there, we got a second report for, um, for the triple E, just to, you know, to give the committee an update, for the second cycle in a row, there was no additional mosquitoes testing positive in the pools and there's very low trap counts, which is indicative of successful spraying and interventions. Uh, we continue to remain in the moderate level, um, but we haven't canceled events or rescheduled events or, um, recommend all precautions, um, including wearing proper repellent clothing, especially during dawn to dusk. And as it gets colder and, and freezing, this will, um, become less of an issue, but it's still something we're keeping a close eye on. The news is very good.
And we're moderate for the rest of the season, no matter what.
We're moderate no matter what happens, yep, we stay in that moderate level, so, um, if, if we were to get an increase, we'd have to additional discussions. School Building Authority, I just wanted to, on everyone's radar, that we have two, two pieces that are being presented to us and it's, it's a little bit tricky, as you've heard from Mr. LaPret, there's also this massive NEESK work that's happening at the same time. Uh, but we've been asked to do, um, on October third, there's going to be a, we were chosen as one of six pilot districts for the school building survey process, so they, uh, get into, you know, over fifteen hundred school buildings on a cycle to evaluate the conditions of the buildings proactively, so that they have a better understanding of the state of the schools and the, the Commonwealth. We were selected, there is a new process with this survey and we're one of the pilot districts, we were selected because of jobs. We were selected because of geography, because of a new building. There's a lot of different variables why we were selected. So that is going to take place on October third. So Mr. Capania, Director of Facilities, Mr. LaPret, Mr. Dr. O'Connell will lead the group through the building on that day. The good news is when, because we're doing the pilot, when they actually come up in the cycle, we don't need to do it a second time. The other schools may need to participate. And then there is another, uh, program that is called the Post Occupancy Evaluation. As Mr. Simon said earlier, we are actually in year ten, which is hard to believe. But they have selected us, we were chosen, selected to participate. That is, I believe, a little bit more voluntary, strongly recommended. But we're trying to assess the value and the time commitment and to understand that process. But I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed. We will try to participate in, in as best we can, but as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot being asked of a lot of our administrators and facilities team at this time. I was trying to say to them, is there any way you could do them both on the same day? You could do two, but that didn't, it's two entirely different processes and teams, and so we're working on that as, as well to learn more.
Thank you. No correspondence? Future business, we have town meeting on October seventh, so we have to remember to post that meeting, too.
That is posted.
And then October twenty-first, and I just want to tell the committee, I will not be here October twenty-first. I'm at a conference, and I don't think I can even call in because there's things in the evening that night. So, Mr. Friedman, you get to run the meeting for the first time.
Woo-hoo!
If, if, if it's not urgent to vote on capital, I would love to vote the next meeting if we could, but I don't know, up to you guys.
We'll see what happens.
You can talk about it and see. Up to, up to the chair at, at the time, but, um, and that is it. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, thank you.